This Fall River City Council Public Hearing will now be called to automatic clerk.
Alzis Kadim?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
LaLipie LaBeau?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Here.
Pelletier?
Hey, hey, here.
Pereira?
President Ponti?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on our agenda tonight is public hearings. Our first item on the public hearing agenda is for a Paul Camalino of 140 Ash Street, Fall River, for the removal of curbing as follows. 140 Ash Street and 144 Ash Street are single-family residences which abut each other on Ash Street. The property owners are requesting to cooperatively remove a total of 12 feet, 7 inches of curb which straddles their property frontage. The curb remaining along their frontage does not provide sufficient space for on-street parking. The proposed work improves access to the property for off-street parking and does not impact on-street parking. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearings were made by Councilor Kilby.
Second.
Secuted by Councilor Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Calling all proponents wishing to speak on this item. Calling all proponents. Hearing none. Calling all opponents wishing to speak on this item. Calling all opponents. Hearing none. Motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close the hearings were made by Councilor Dion.
Motion to close the hearing.
Secuted by Councilor Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is Kathleen Hurley, 144 Ash Street, Fall River, for the removal of curbing as follows. And it will be the same narrative as I stated before in item number one. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Motion to open the hearings were made by Councilor Kadim. Secuted by Councilor Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Calling all proponents wishing to speak on this item. Calling all proponents. Hearing none. Calling all opponents wishing to speak. Calling all opponents. Hearing none. Motion to close?
Close.
Motion to close. The hearings were made by Councilor Kilby. Secuted by Councilor Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item three, Stanley Webb, 9 McCabe Street, Dartmouth, Massachusetts, for the removal of curbing as follows. The petitioner's original driveway construction at a single-family property home was 12 feet. The property owner increased the opening to 19 feet to improve off-street parking access for the tenants of the property. The street was recently repaved and the city contractor was unaware that the driveway was not grandfathered. Approval and reconstructed the driveway entrance to current standards. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Motion open.
Motion to open the hearings were made by Councilor Kilby. Secuted by Councilor Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Calling all proponents wishing to speak on this item. Calling all proponents. Hearing none. Calling all opponents wishing to speak on this item. Calling all opponents. Hearing none. Is there a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. The hearings were made by Councilor Lee. Secuted by Councilor Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is item number four, 64 Stevens Street LLC, 31 Nelson Way, Mansfield, Massachusetts, for permission to store 24,000 gallons of gasoline and 24,000 of gasoline diesel for a total of 48,000 gallons underground at 64 Stevens Street, Lot E27004 in the access plan. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Motion open.
Motion to open the hearing has been made by Councilor Dion. Secuted by Councilor Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Calling all proponents wishing to speak on this item. Come on down. One at a time. Proponents? Those who are in favor. Proponents. Come on down. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Michael Keigho.
You can have a seat, sir.
Thank you. I'm an attorney with Parkridge, Snow and Han in New Bedford, Massachusetts.
Motion to waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules has been made by Councilor Lee. Secuted by Councilor Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. The application for the underground storage tank license is made in conjunction with a proposed project for Cumberland Farms Convenience Store, Gas and Car Wash, very similar to what is going up in other communities around us. It's a new model. As you may have seen, the stores are somewhat of a colonial look. White, green and blue is the color scheme and there are significant landscaping features which are about the property. We have been through site plan review in the city with the planning board and received approvals with direction or conditions on them which we intend to follow. Excuse me, we've also been before the Conservation Commission and we have gotten through that without any incidents, so we do have what we need from Conservation as well. Part of the property is in a buffer zone, but the buffer zone, no part of the property is actually impacting the wetlands. We're not asking to disturb the wetlands. These particular tanks that I have with me this evening, Mr. Robert Calucci from Web Engineering and Jeff Bandini as well as John Marshand, those are engineers for the tanks, traffic and site, so we brought all the folks who could answer any technical questions if you have them. But we have two tanks that we're interested in installing. Each of them is 24,000 gallons which is a standard-sized tank for fueling stations. One will only have gasoline, regular 18,000 gallons, premium six. The other will have gasoline approximately 18,000 and 6,000 of diesel. So the second tank will actually have three chambers. It could possibly have a more ethanol-based fuel in there if they wanted to, but that's not what they're intending to do at the beginning, at least. These tanks were designed with the utmost and the foremost safety features. They're state-of-the-art. They're double-walled with interstitial brine. The material does not degrade. There's numerous monitoring systems, and I'll let Mr. Calucci give you that information, but there are numerous monitoring systems and safeguards. For instance, if someone were to drive off with the fueling nozzle still in the tank, there's a cutoff both at the nozzle and at the end of the hose that it detaches and a cutoff at the fuel dispenser. So it very much minimizes any spillage. Same thing with the dispensers themselves. They cut off at the tank and at the outlet. So that, they're pretty well designed so that any kind of event that could occur is going to minimize any disruption to the tank below. And I submit to you that there won't be better underground storage tanks for gasoline in the city of Fall River. This will be the best they make. There isn't anything better. And the procedures and protocols that are used by Cumberland Farms, because these systems are both monitored in the store and at a central location 24/7, so that there's never an opportunity for any issues to go unnoticed with those tanks. And with that, I'd bring Mr. Calucci down to discuss for you some of the specific details of these tanks.
I just hope the councils are aware, you folks already own this property? It's already in your ownership?
No, the owner is actually here this evening. It's under agreement.
Is under agreement to purchase, so you do not own the property at this point?
That is correct.
And is it contingent upon this meeting, you getting granted approval?
I would say it is contingent upon getting all the approvals and so far we have gotten them, but without the approvals, you can't build a Cumberland Farms.
Right.
And that's what we want.
So it is contingent upon you getting approvals from the city council and respective city departments, correct?
That is correct.
For you to fulfill the obligations of the sale. Thank you.
Yes.
So my name is Bob Calucci. I'm with Web Engineering. I personally worked for Web Engineering for over 30 years and what we've been doing is designing underground storage facilities. We provide technical assistance to Cumberland Farms when they need it. We are very familiar with the systems that they use and part of my thunder was stolen, but what was said that the state-of-the-art tanks are made out of a fiberglass material, very substantial. It's very resistant to the fuels and to the anticipated fuels that will be going in there. They're double-walled. In between the two walls is a brine solution, so that if one of the walls were to leak, this brine, which is environmentally friendly, would leak either into the tank or into the ground, but in either case, they would get an alarm right away from that. All of the piping associated with these tanks is double-walled and that also is pitched toward a liquid tight sump, so that if there was any kind of a leak inside of one of those pipes, the first thing that would happen, it would trigger an alarm. The second thing that might, that would happen is that each pump is fitted with what's called a mechanical line leak detector, which means that if that leak occurs during the evening when there's no activity at the station, they would know it because the pumps would shut off in the morning when they came in. If they get that alarm, that also shuts off the pump. They have inventory monitoring on the tanks, so they're constantly monitoring for the fuel levels, so if there's any sudden loss, they would know about it. But also, it monitors for water, which the brine is, water solution. So if there was a leak in the inner tank, the brine would flow into the inner tank and would immediately be detected. I will say that Cumberland Farms is above, and I say this sincerely, that Cumberland Farms is the most safety-conscious of the marketers that I'm aware of, because they have safeties that you don't see with maybe a private ownership or mom-and-pop store. All of their inventory monitoring is monitored off-site by a third party. So if there's an event that occurs in the middle of the night, somebody knows about it, somebody's monitoring it, somebody's calling their central emergency response team, and so they're going to come right over there and check it out. Because if you picture that these tanks and piping and dispensers are all inside of a secondary containment envelope that is sealed, you just figure that if they do have a leak from any of these elements, it's going to be contained by the outer wall, by the outer containment system. That outer containment system is heavily tested at startup and then annually, I shouldn't say annually, but periodically, it's hydrostatically tested, meaning they put water in it and then they make sure that the water's not leaking out, and then they know it's tight. They're following the, Massachusetts has very strict now, which just recently, and we were involved with the development of those regulations, Massachusetts, the Department of Environmental Protection took over the underground tank program from the State Fire Marshal's office and then began implementing all of the federal requirements as well as their more conservative requirements. So it's, these systems are very safe. On the vapor side, you might have heard of stage one and stage two vapor recovery. That means that no vapors are allowed to escape, no gasoline vapors are allowed to escape into the atmosphere, because when the transport truck comes in to make a delivery, all of the vapors that are, as the liquid flows into the tanks, it pushes the vapors into the transport truck, who then takes them away. He brings them where he's filling up back at a central bulk plant. He's taking those vapors and putting them into those tanks. And when, the vent pipe on the gasoline tanks is fitted with a pressure vacuum vent cap and that prevents those vapors from going out that vent stack. Instead, that forces them to go back into the truck. So relatively no vapors emitting from that process. You may also notice other great improvements that have happened in this vapor recovery system is that, you remember a couple of years ago, you had that awkward boot that you know, you tried, you had to kind of work and fit into your car. Well, they've done away with that and now that there's an onboard vapor recovery system on all your vehicles, and you'll probably notice that you don't get that whiff of gasoline like you used to, and that's because of these improvements in the vapor recovery system. And again, the DEP monitors that. They're required to test those, they're required to self-inspect on a weekly basis all of the components of this vapor recovery system and also bring in a third party once a year to check the system, to make sure it's tight. Now, all of this is monitored by a system of certified operators, and you may have heard of this if you, but the DEP developed this where you have A-operators, B-operators and C-operators. They're all trained in emergency response and in the elements of this system. So this is, no longer are these stations being run by people who don't know anything, you know, who just know how to pump gas. From the guy who's, from the person who's behind the counter, you know, ringing up the register, to the person delivering fuel, to the people who are stocking shelves, everyone knows what to do, invent an alarm, they know who to call, and everything is kept, is within the, you know, monitoring requirements of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. And I, you know, I could go, I have some photos I could pass around, unfortunately it's not large enough to, but...
All right, thank you. A couple of councils have raised their hand to speak on recognized councillor in seat five, councillor.
Sir, thank you for all that information. Appreciate it. So there's a couple, there's a lot of things we have to weigh when we have something like this going on. We have to weigh the fact that we do need and want more businesses to open up in Fall River. That helps taxpayers, that helps everything in our city, but also at the same time with the safety factors, but there's also traffic concerns, there's people who are living in this area that express their concerns to us and we actually have to be charged with asking these questions to you. So a few of them, we actually have one about the traffic concerns in that area, but because you went on so many different technical things about the storage and things like that, I had a couple of questions about that. How often do, does Cumberland Farms have to deal with alarms and leaks and things like that? How frequently does that happen, at least in this area?
Well, it doesn't, it's not frequent at all because with these new stations, they're tested so heavily.
Yeah.
And monitored so heavily that they don't want these false alarms. They don't want any kind of alarm, and so there's no corners that are cut.
Yep. All the detail, all the technology that you described for this upcoming project, is that the same standard that you have with the other Cumberland Farms that are in our area?
Any stations that were installed in the, you know, in the recent five or six or seven years?
Sort of one in the north end?
North end?
North end of Fall River.
Oh, okay. I can't, I'm not specifically familiar with that station.
Okay.
I don't know the age of it.
Okay. All right, just curious about that, because we do have some in the city that are functioning just fine, and I just wanted to see if that standard was met, you know. The other thing too is we do have...
Excuse me, I can just, I want to amplify the answer. When I was in a different community about a year ago, Mr. Webb from, Mr. Bardriver from Web Engineering had made a statement in writing during his testimony, which that particular board makes you swear like you're in court under oath. And he said of all of the systems he's installed that is similar to the one we're talking about here, over the period of years that they've been available, not one of them has leaked.
Okay. That provides some reassurance.
Yeah, well fiberglass, yeah, fiberglass tanks, once they're installed properly, there, you know, there's, there doesn't, let's just say effect, they give you a 30-year warranty, but that number's kind of arbitrary. I think that it was, they came up with this in the 1980s because they didn't figure they would be around for 30 years. But the fact is that those fiberglass tanks that were installed in the 1980s are still being used, still tight, and I've not encountered a single fiberglass tank that's had to be removed because of wear and tear or leakage in that regard.
And the city councils, we all have to, I mean, it's our number-one job is to take concerns of the community. We have a couple of emails and letters that were sent to us, so I feel it's our duty to at least ask these questions to you straight up. When it comes to traffic, and I know that area pretty well, there's a Walmart right there and, you know, but there's also a Rockland Trust Bank that's there right now. The person who reached out to us asked, you know, there's already, without Cumberland Farms there, which is going to bring a lot more traffic, there's already some traffic problems, there's already some entry problems going into that area. Has any of that been addressed? Has any of that been talked to you about or anything like that at all?
That's a very good question, Mr. Lee. We do have our traffic engineer here who can speak to that point directly, but I will say, in general, Cumberland Farms rely upon the pass-by traffic. That's what we're looking for, for the location. Cumberland Farms is rarely the destination. It's more impulse. You drive by to get fuel, you stop in to get a cup of coffee. So a very high percentage of the business that's Cumberland Farms is generated by the existing traffic, not new traffic, but we did go into that in some detail and there was a traffic study, a very detailed traffic study that we looked at, and we also went and discussed this with planning at site plan review. But with that, I'll ask our traffic engineer, Jeff Bandini, to come down. He's from McMahon and Associates, they're traffic engineers.
And I'll yield the floor, councillor.
Thank you. Councillor in seat three, councillor Kilby?
Just quick, what are the conditions that were imposed by the planning board?
There was a host of conditions relative to, for instance, entrance, one of the entrances can only be one way, not two ways, et cetera. So we agreed that those would be reasonable. There was also going to be some subsequent testing of the traffic after the fact, I believe, and so we had to verify that the numbers were still accurate after the facility was up, and if not, we'd have to take some action relative to the signalization on our cost.
So the main, the conditions related to traffic?
Correct.
Okay, so maybe the engineer's can elaborate on that for me?
That's what I said.
Because that's the majority of the questions we're getting from neighbors is the issue of traffic, so.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Before we acknowledge other councillors, two things. If you could all state your name and address for the record, please, and then after you're done doing that, if the individuals who came down to speak and do a very brief highlight of the traffic situation, if you could just summarize for us, that'd be great. If we could start to the right, I don't think we've got your name and address for the record and work our way down, that'd be great.
My name is Bob Calucci with Web Engineering Associates, 111 Sumner Street, Situate, Massachusetts.
Jeff Bandini with McMahon Associates, 350 Miles Standish Boulevard, Taunton, Mass.
John Marshand, Farland Corp., 401 County Street in Bedford.
Okay, very good. If you could just give us the brief overview from the traffic side of things.
Yes, I'd be happy to.
That councillor Lee referenced, that'd be great.
I'd be happy to. Thank you. Again, Michael mentioned a lot of the traffic elements that we did look at, but again, just to address some of the concerns of the residents and the board, I will give a brief overview of the existing and proposed traffic. So again, we did look at the intersection of Brayton and Stevens as part of this project, and we also looked at the intersection of the Route 24 interchange located just to the east. It's not shown on the civil engineering plan here. And we did look at the proposed driveways, both in terms of access and level of service, in terms of what would function within the study area, and Michael did mention the right-in and the right-out on Brayton, and that's for the existing median there and to ensure that folks don't turn left out of there. We want them to exit the site using the signal in order to turn left. Again, we did look, we did do an extensive traffic study that included a lot of elements that we typically include for a project like this, including a crash summary, just to look at and make sure that there are no crash statistics that would point to any sort of corrective measures that may need to be done at these locations. We found that both are, the crash rate, crashes per million entering vehicles are below both the state and District 5 averages for signalized intersections. In order to grow the traffic to future projections, we did contact Serpide, we did contact the city regarding developments that may be located in this area to establish a future growth rate, so we can try to determine the amount of traffic that not only exists now, not only exists with the project in place, but for a future seven-year design horizon, which is what Mass DOT recommends. So in terms of analyzing what will exist in the future based on this project as presented, we looked at the number of gas pumps, tent pumps, we looked at Institute of Transportation Engineers data for that, and established the amount of trips to the site. And again, as Michael mentioned, a lot of the trips to the site, in fact, two-thirds of it from ITE pass data, is pass-by traffic. It's traffic that is in the area already that decides to turn in and continue on their destination. It's not necessarily bringing new trips to the site, it's pulling trips from the existing adjacent roadways. That being said, we did take that into account when running our future traffic analysis at both signals. We do understand the concern with the, both the delay and level of service at that intersection particular adjacent to the site, and as Michael mentioned, we would be happy to look at how the site functions in the future. We think right now that the amount of delay added to the site could be mitigated by providing signal timing adjustments at that intersection, being looking at the splits, northbound, southbound, eastbound, westbound, whether to favor the traffic that's coming from the site, or just to ensure that the amount of delay in queuing is not of significant nature here. We do understand the concerns that already exist out there today. We're able to mitigate that, we feel, with both the signal timings that I mentioned and in providing that right-in, right-out to ensure there's no additional movements that we feel are going to block the progress of traffic on either of the site roadways.
All right, very good. Thank you so much. Next councillor to ask to speak, councillor in seat three, sorry, councillor in seat two, councillor Dion.
You were discussing the shut-off for the, if the pipe leaks during operating hours. Is it safe to assume that when you are not operating, you are shutting the pumps down so they're off when people are off-site?
Yes, that's correct. Power would be terminated or, you know, inside the building. You know, you wouldn't be able to get fuel there during...
And what are you looking at for hours of operation?
That's a good question. We didn't specify hours of operation, but traditionally, they would look for 24/7. In some of the communities that have imposed limitations, the limitations have been like 6:00 in the morning until midnight, so the very early morning hours for retail, but they've also allowed for the deliveries to occur at off-hours. You want your deliveries to be not at your peak traffic times, so, and the deliveries would also be food product, not necessarily fuel. And you might note that the stores are a little bit larger than what has previously been the size of a convenience store. That's not increasing the retail space as much as it is increasing the storage space. So Cumberland Farms is able to take a delivery less frequently because they can store their paper goods and some of the packaged foods without having to have the more frequent deliveries of a smaller store. The retail space is not a lot larger than the existing Cumberland Farms that are much older, so they greatly increase storage to try to reduce the amount of deliveries.
It also pertains to the underground storage tanks. The size, these are larger than what you might have typically seen at a gas station, but it's designed so that they can really limit the number of trips that the transports come in, meaning that they still have plenty of fuel when they're calling for a delivery, and so they can tell them, you know, when to come. It's not an emergency situation for them.
So how many square feet are we talking overall?
The entire project? John, I can let you speak to that.
It's a 1.7 acre site. The convenience store is 4,384 square feet, and there's a, on this project, there's an attached car wash that's 2,600 square feet, must remind you.
Now, in terms of public safety, I didn't hear you address your fire suppression system?
Yeah, there is a fire, there will be a fire suppression system which is required anywhere that there's self-service. It will be a dry chemical fire suppression system.
Okay. I yield.
Thank you. Councillor in seat seven, councillor Pelletier?
Thank you. One of my concerns has been brought up was traffic, of course. We have nightmares in other parts of the city, and we certainly don't want to see it in that part of the city as well. Did you guys check out the other gas station that was across the street that pulled it up, that had all the tanks down there? You guys ever think about that place? It's right in back of McDonald's, right across the street.
The old Sam, it was an old Sam's Club.
Sam's Club, right.
Gas station.
And I don't know how many pumps they had there. I didn't know, but you guys had the site in this particular corner?
Yes, this, this site was looked at by the development team well, well before the offers were made and well before any agreements were signed. Particularly, I think, because of the fact of the existing traffic and access to the highway particularly. Whether or not that other site was available then, I don't know. And I can't tell you whether it was rejected or even known about, so I don't want to mislead you there. But this site was thought to be a very desirable location for Cumberland Farms. It would suit the needs of Cumberland Farms, and we believe it would also, we can do this with actually no negative impact in the neighborhood, or maybe even if we redo some timing on the signalization, we could actually improve the traffic. Believe it or not, Cumberland Farms doesn't like to see nightmarish traffic either, because that makes people not want to come into the store. Or if they have a hard time getting out, they're not going to want to go back. So, we like the traffic to move along. That's, and we are willing to help in that regard.
So, how long has the project been kicking around?
I would say from, from my involvement, it's been kicking around for almost two years.
Two years. Now, the Cumberland Farms on Stafford Road, is that going to maintain a Cumberland Farm as well?
I haven't heard anything to the contrary, Mr. Pelletier, so I would say so. They, if they're going to redo it, they also have another program, which is what we call the Raise and Rebuild. So, even the older Cumberland Farms, they've torn down and rebuilt with a more modern looking, the current looking facilities. And so, they will do that eventually. I haven't known them to abandon a location. At least to the times I've been representing them, they've not abandoned any location because they built a new one.
No. I think it's something that we should know anyway, really. I mean, whether or not, is it a secret? You're going to close it or not close it, or whatever. But that particular one, there was always a problem up there with a time schedule. In fact, I went there one time, it was a little before seven. No gas, no gas. No, we opened at seven. And then the problem at night, 10 o'clock, that's it, shut it down. And they want a longer hours. But it's residential neighborhood as well. And you guys are in the corner, but you've got all the resident in the back. What's the closest house to the gas station?
Turn to John on that.
Nobody knows?
How, sorry, how many, we have, let's just stick to the conversation that's at the table right now.
Do we know?
I, I know there's some engineering work that's been done. About how many feet away is the closest residential property? Does anybody know?
I would approximate about 100 feet from the.
100 feet?
About 100 feet. So, pretty close.
Because you're almost in a parking lot. All right, size of point. All right, you've got two 24 tanks gallons. One is subdivided into three compartments.
Correct.
So, how often would the trucks come there to fill the tanks? And how much gasoline comes in the big tank, the tankers? What does that hold?
A transport truck is about, is 10,000 gallons.
10,000.
They come compartmentalized, so that if they don't sell as, those three grades of, the three fuels will be gas, regular gasoline, super gasoline, and diesel fuel. They don't sell the gas, the super or the diesel at the same volume as the regular. So, they'll order it in compartments and try to fill everything with, you know, try to minimize the amount of time that a truck comes onto the site.
So, you're saying that one truck would fill them all, the three compartments?
Well, one truck may or may not fill them all, because it depends on what's remaining, you know, what's, what capacity's remaining in the tanks at the time the truck arrives. But, yeah, the transit, the truck will be able to drop in all three products if, if that's what's ordered.
A place like the super Cumberland Farms, 24,000 gallons, and how long before they deplete that 24,000? They do that one day?
Well, I, I can't speak for, every station is probably different. I don't know. Is there somebody here who can answer to that? It would, at least twice a week.
It's on volume, and it depends on the volume. Believe it or not, with the number of dispensers we have here, this would be a medium-sized, not a supersized Cumberland Farms. We've had significantly more multi-fuel dispensers on some of the larger ones. But it does depend on volume. I would say probably twice a week would be the, the average delivery schedule for Cumberland Farms. And I would assume that this would be, as a medium-sized Cumberland Farms, probably in the average capacity. It certainly wouldn't be more than three a week, I don't think. If it is, we've, we've got too many, we have too few fueling stations then.
But those trucks come in, don't come in during peak hours, because they, you know, they will deliver outside of those hours.
Now, who would do more business, the gas or the store itself, for coffee, donuts, and whatever else, magazines, whatever?
I think you're doing a greater volume of dollar business with the gasoline. But believe it or not, with the current Cumberland Farms, the remodeled Cumberland Farms, the stores themselves are doing a very good job on selling their products, much better than the older ones. So, it is a significant, I think, improvement for the stores selling profit-wise and also percentage-wise. But there's still, I think, most of it is gasoline sales.
Well, I've been to a few, and they sell a lot of coffee, I'll tell you that.
They do. That's been a big seller these days, the 99 cent coffee.
Coffee, is it?
Yep. It's been a big seller.
Which is good, I guess.
And they've also improved what they carry in stock. And the stores, because they're clean, neat, and well-lit inside, they attract people to, to do some shopping versus, you know, a dark and dirty store. So, they have seen an increase in sales in the stores. It's a higher percentage than the old model, but it's not the same as the gasoline sales.
All right. I think that's it for now. What's, you've got this process here. What do you got next scheduled? What do you got left to do?
Once we finish with obtaining, hopefully, the U S T license, then we have to start working on the contracts and scheduling. And then, there has to be a permit from the fire department before we can install the tanks and use them. We also have to get permits from the state for those U S Ts. And it's just a matter of working with the D P W and whatnot for connecting up the utilities and making sure that the roads.
So, what should come first? This tonight, or all the other agencies that you've got to deal with?
Oh, I think this tonight. We, we have already done some of the other preliminary agencies I mentioned, planning and conservation. So, without those, there'd be no point in coming before you. But if we got a U S T without all of that, we would be kind of putting the cart before the horse, I think.
Have you sat, sit down with the neighborhoods up there?
I haven't personally sat down with any neighborhood.
Anybody from Cumberland?
I, I can't speak to anyone from Cumberland. I haven't, and I'm not aware of any meeting that was planned.
Well, you know, it's always good, you're coming in and try to put 48,000 gallons of gasoline and maybe a lot more traffic with the coffee and everything else that, you know, neighbors should, they know you're coming, maybe. But, you know, if they've got problems, maybe they can answer some of the problems, and maybe we've been getting the calls. You know, Counselor, we're concerned about this and this and this. But if you guys went ahead and already talked to these people, maybe we'd come, they fear, they fears out, you know? So, I mean, I think maybe that's one avenue you should have took. And I think I said enough. Whatever happens here tonight, we'll see what happens, and good luck to all of us. That's it.
Thank you. This is also item 14 on our city council agenda tonight as well. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Adian.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, for the folks at the table, I don't envy your, your job. I know you go from community to community and try to give us the pitches, and, you know, you've got to deal with all the quality of life issues that all the communities have. I will say, though, the, the facilities that you've been putting up, or that Cumberland Farms has been putting up, is really a great product. But again, I think that the concerns, a lot of the times, in which you guys, where you folks deal with are really just the quality of life issues, because a lot of these properties are but residential areas and neighborhoods, so that becomes some of our concerns. And while the city council, the only thing that we're here and the only authority that we have is really the underground storage tanks. That's, that's our approval process. We can't necessarily dictate any of the road cuts, the, the number of pumps that you have or anything like that, that goes through the, the planning board. But before we approve the storage tank, which is a vital part of your operation, I, I think we just need to make sure that we're comfortable with the situation that's being laid out in the plan. So, just a couple of questions for you. You had mentioned you went to the planning board, so you received all approvals from the planning board?
We had a site plan approval from the planning board. And the discussion, or at least the concerns that were addressed, involved traffic, and we, it was the proposal before you. So, we didn't come and add the gasoline afterwards. The gasoline was part of that proposal.
Right.
And we also addressed the entrances and exits from the site, how that would impact existing traffic and proposed traffic. So, there was an awful lot of discussion in that regard. And as far as the Conservation Commission, which we were able to get through favorably with, we're not working in the wetlands, so we can't do that. But we do have a part of the site which is in the buffer zone. John, can you just show the buffer zone?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. I mean, you've got 100, is it 100-foot buffer, or is it 150?
Your, your buffer zone is 100, 100 feet from the wetlands, I believe.
So, you folks are, you, you're outside that conservation buffer? And so, the tanks are all, the conservation was comfortable with the tanks being, the underground tanks being located there, not, if there was a leak, there's no infiltration into the, to the wetlands?
Well, hopefully, we keep, we, we don't have leaks, because that's been the history. But yes, we're not, we're away from the buffer zone, let alone the wetlands.
Okay, so in terms of, just going back to the planning board, so did they, did they change any of your parking plans? Like, and I think you might have mentioned it earlier, but I didn't catch the number. How many parking spots do we have on the?
25.
25. Was that the original plan, or was that minimized, or?
I think we might have increased by one or two.
From planning?
No, from the original submission as part of the planning.
Yeah, as a result of planning. And we also are changing.
So, as a result, going through the planning board, that you were able to see an increase in the number of spots that required? Okay.
Yeah, we also, the original plan had, one of the entrances was both right and left turns, and as a result of planning, we've eliminated the left turn. So, we took planning's comments, suggestions to heart and made the changes. So, there is a, there are, like I mentioned earlier, with the comment regarding, you know, let's see what traffic brings and whether the signalization has to be adjusted. So, we have a requirement to go back and test that, and we will.
So, in terms, so you've got three, is that three entrances and exits? Is that, so you've got one on Brayton Ave. and then two on Stevens?
Correct, yes.
So, so which one is only going to be a right-hand, is that what you said, right-hand turn?
Yeah, the one on Brayton.
Oh, the one on Brayton, but the Stevens Street is going to go, you can either go right or left on?
Yes, and the one on Baird Street is located directly across from the roadway. There's a separate one that's in between Brayton and Baird that's all-access. The one shown on the bottom. North is actually pointing straight down, the orientation.
Right, so that's Brayton Ave, right?
Yes. You can't turn left from the site onto Brayton. You can only turn right.
So, that, when you come out that way, you can actually go directly across? Isn't there a median there?
There is a median there, yeah. That's why it's right and right.
You wouldn't be able to go, coming out, you wouldn't be able to go left anyways, because you'd be going up the wrong way.
Correct.
Brayton Ave, okay. So, just in terms of the, your traffic study that you were, you were doing, and you were saying that you're not going to have any increased volume, but you're going to be pulling from, obviously, the traffic count that's currently there.
There will be some increased volume.
Okay, so, and so, the traffic count that you have, how, how many cars are you anticipating pulling into the, into the station at peak hours?
We do have those numbers.
Then what do you consider peak hours, just for clarifying purposes?
Typical peak hours are four, 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon, and 11:00 to 2:00 on Saturdays. We did, when we took the peak hour of the intersection during our traffic count, we used whatever hour that was, so 4:30 to 5:30, let's just say. Or like 7:30 to 8:30, let's just say. So, just give me a second, I'm going to pull up those numbers. So, in terms of new project trips? About 51 on the north side driveway, so that's the one in between Baird Street and Brayton.
Okay.
And then 12 across from Baird, and then eight into the site via Brayton Avenue. And 40, 40 out, that same driveway. So, that's for Saturday. I can go through all the numbers. I could, I'd be happy to provide.
So, could you do, could you do like a weekday and then just pick a random weekday? I don't know if there's a busier.
Yeah, typically, I think the, for this sort of use of the morning tended to be the higher of the peak hours. So, the north side driveway, the one I mentioned before, the one that's between Brayton and Baird, 49 in. And then Baird, 11 opposite the one on Baird, and then eight in the right-in, right-out.
So, when you say 49 in, so are you saying between 7:00 and 9:00, or are you saying between 7:00 and 9:00, 4:00 and 6:00, and 11:00 and 2:00? Is that?
So, this was for a single peak hour in the morning.
So, just, so from 7:00 to 9:00, you're anticipating 49 cars going in through the north side? Is that what you said?
Yes. So, this would be folks coming from Route 24 and turning left towards, towards the site.
Okay. So, in, in that two-hour span, 49 vehicles?
It would be a single peak hour.
When you say single peak, could you just?
Yeah, so the, the peak period that the numbers are valid for would be any single peak hour within the two-hour frame.
Right, so seven, like 7:00 to 9:00?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. So, from 7:00 to 9:00, we can anticipate that you, based on traffic counts, anticipate 49 vehicles coming in from Brayton Ave entrance in there, right? And then, how many were you suggesting, and how, how do you calculate, just for my own edification, how many cars are coming out onto Stevens Street?
Basically, what we do is we do like a distribution. We look at how much traffic is going whichever direction, like if it's towards Route 24, if it's towards the neighborhoods, or if it's towards westbound. So, we balance those out based on the origin, destination of the trips.
So, I guess what I'm trying to get to is my concern is not necessarily about access, the traffic coming in from Brayton Ave, because Brayton Ave is pretty heavily traffic and roadway as it stands now. My concern really is the Stevens Street portion, which is a highly residential location. And then, we talked a little bit about the traffic lights and the adjustments that are going to be made. But I wasn't, not quite sure, when we say we're going to make adjustments, what that necessarily means in terms of what type of adjustments we're going to make and what the impact is going to be in terms of the, the volume and the traffic queuing on Brayton Ave. But again, my real concern is the queuing on Stafford, I mean, on Stevens Street.
Yeah.
So, when we have all these vehicles coming out, you know, I, I know it's nice to have these drawings and these displays saying that there's Brayton Ave. But at the end of the day, if somebody's trying to go up Brayton Ave towards Stafford Road, you know, and they don't want to queue, now we've got a, a lot of different traffic cutting through all these residential neighborhoods, cutting through, trying to get to Jefferson Street or somewhere else, bypassing all of Brayton Ave, which, again, I, I know they're public roadways, but it creates more of a quality of life issue where now the police department gets calls, or the traffic department is getting calls, that we've got, you know, people racing through, trying to, trying to get a bypass through these residential neighborhoods. Not to mention, during the peak time of the 7:00 to 9:00, we also got the charter school there, which is already chaotic in itself in terms of queuing up on Jefferson Street and, and Brayton Ave. So, what I'm trying to figure out is, have we taken into account, I know you're doing traffic studies for Brayton Ave here, but when we're looking at the traffic count, how, what guarantees do we have that we're going to be able to divert the traffic to where it really needs to, to go and, and limit the true impacts on the residential neighborhoods? And have we taken into account the traffic on Jefferson Street, because there is a major queue up there and what that looks like? And I don't even know if traffic, I see Ms. Ferrer in the audience. In terms of the traffic for queuing up on Jefferson Street from the, to charter school, do we still have police detail going out there, or is that, has that subs? That's, so that's been reduced based on? That's, so that's been reduced based on the busing and the, okay. So, so how do, how do we guarantee the, the cars are gonna be funneled out through Brayton Ave. and is, and I know you can't guarantee it a hundred percent, but what type of reassurance can we provide to the residents that are concerned about this?
So, again, that's where the, that's where the traffic re-timing of the signals. So, basically, what, what we're doing is when we're adding the trips to that intersection, it becomes like a rebalance of the volumes that are already there. So the volumes are what they are, the traffic signal timing is in theory based on the balance of those volumes, how many lefts, how many threes, how many rights. So when we say that X amount of vehicles are gonna come off 24, and they're gonna turn left into the site, well, that creates an imbalance with that left turn lane. So we'd wanna make sure that that re-timing focuses on being able to make sure that that queue can get through the traffic light. So the same could be set for vehicles exiting the site, going towards the intersection. So that creates an imbalance, like for instance, for this one I'm looking at in front of me, shows nineteen lefts and eleven right turns, so that's approximately, you know, about thirty vehicles extra per hour. Again, that doesn't seem like a significant number, and it may not be, but when you're talking about cycle after cycle, we wanna make sure that those peaks could be balanced and there's not a heavy amount of queue coming from the site towards the intersection. Because again, as Michael mentioned, if, if there's a significant queue to get out of there and folks can't turn left to go west, then they just won't come to the site. So our balancing kinda takes that into account when we, and again, the balancing may correct measures that may already exist. Like when you say that there's a queue on, on Stevens, rebalancing the volumes may correct some of the shift that's gone on in traffic since the intersection was originally timed. Signal timing doesn't generally happen overnight, you usually have to go through an approval process to make sure that gets changed. Well, as schools go in and, you know, neighborhood shifts and, and mode shifts, things like that, those don't happen overnight. So when those things all get taken into account and you look at kind of a new system, sometimes you do get some inherent improvements just from going back and revisiting something that was maybe done ten or fifteen years ago, or, or maybe even when the, when the Walmart was put in. Maybe this intersection hasn't even been looked at since that, since that occurred. So in terms of reassurances, and, and what we can do is try to just minimize delay as best we can. And again, I believe as part of the site plan approval, we, we spoke about going back and getting traffic counts after the fact, just to see how our study measures up. And a lot of times when we do that, we find that the traffic is not as great as we predicted for reasons unknown, in terms of, you know, maybe there's more pass-by traffic than we thought. Maybe we are drawing more people directly from Route 24 just because of its proximity. A lot of times, the pass-by traffic doesn't take into account that sort of thing. Maybe we find that because Cumberland Farms is new and bright and has a lot to offer, maybe it's drawing even more traffic, not only for its location, but for its offerings as well.
Madam Clerk, just, just for clarification before I ask my next question, in terms of the underground storage tank, this is a one-time approval by the city council, right? That stays with the property owner? So as it changes hands, then they gotta come back, right? So it's not a, an annual renewal?
It stays with the property.
So the, the only annual license renewal would be with the fire department in terms of being up to code on, on items, right?
They renew every year with the city clerk's office.
Okay. So, the, the statement that you had just made, saying that, I guess, in your conversations with the planning board, that you would revisit the queuing of the signal after the store opens up in operations, again, not saying that you wouldn't follow through on it, what guarantees does the city have that, that would be corrected, right? So from, from my standpoint, yeah, if, if we put in stipulations on, on a liquor license, we know that every year, the liquor licenses are gonna be renewed through, not necessarily through this board, but through the licensing board. So they have a mechanism and an ability and some leverage to, and a safety net to make sure that those stipulations are being adhered to, right? So, from that standpoint, if we're not having a bite at the apple in a year from now, and there are traffic concerns, I don't know what mechanism we would have as a community to ensure that, you know, Cumberland Farms is doing what they promised to kinda requeue and, and make the changes, which, of course, you know, involves a lot of investment as well, and, you know, traffic studies and, and, you know, doing the corrections in the, on the signals. And, so what guarantees do we have? And, and then my second question to that would be, how far, when you start talking about signals, how far up do you go? Are you going all the way up to Stafford Road and then towards Maritime Street and, in the Westport Route Six area, in terms of traffic lights?
So in terms of this study, all we did was we studied this signal and the one at the Route 24 ramps. We didn't look at west of the site at all.
Okay.
And that was in terms of just scoping what we felt at the time was gonna, the areas that were gonna be most impacted by this development, in terms of like the trip distribution, looking at the existing traffic volumes. What did we feel like was gonna be the most impactful, what was gonna draw the most additional new trips to the site? In terms of guarantees, at this point, what we can do is, again, look at what happens, you know, a few months down the road. A lot of times, new developments draw higher volumes in the first few months that they're open, and then things tend to tail off. So, if that approval means that we have to continually just keep looking at the volumes and hope that there's some level of improvement over time, then I think, I think we would be amenable to that. In, in terms of, if there continues to be issues there, we would have to look at additional mitigation, what could be done in terms of providing, you know, extra lanes, extra capacity, that sort of thing. A lot of times, that doesn't end up, that doesn't end up happening just because of the amount of investment that the city would have to make in terms of, or their proponent would have to make in terms of right-of-way acquisition, coordination with other nearby properties, and, and things of that nature. So, a lot of time, these things tend to, over time, they tend to settle a little bit. We do understand the concerns. As far as the study area goes, we would happy to discuss that with the city in terms of what would be an appropriate scope. I know you mentioned the charter school and police detail that's required there. If that's something that we need to look into, and that's something that we, we could address, if, if down the road this does continue to be an issue and may increase, you know, traffic volume accordingly.
Yeah, and I, I think for one, just as, as one council sitting here, I, I think you, at a minimum, should be looking at the traffic from Jefferson Street, because the charter school is at the end of Jefferson Street. So depending in which direction they're gonna go, and again, I haven't, I haven't been there in quite some time, but when the charter school initially opened up, the queuing over there on Jefferson Street was ridiculous, and so we did have some police detail, and I, I know the busing probably alleviated it with the, the second exit from that standpoint. But again, even at that, when you're coming out, you've, you've got people, you know, sporadically just moving into different neighborhoods, and if you're trying to get to the east end of the city, you're gonna start cutting through these neighborhoods here, and the only way out, from that standpoint, to get back onto Brayton Ave. is through Stevens Street. That's the only way, if you're cutting from Jefferson down to any of those other side streets. So, at that point, which, again, you're, you're saying a peak hour is four to six. So, technically, we might just miss the peak hour, but, I mean, if, if the school is letting out at two-thirty or three o'clock, it, it could get very well to your, your peak hour, which may not be a hot peak hour of four to six, right? So that, so you got that additional traffic, which, again, I would assume that everybody leaving the schools, if they want a coffee or some additional sandwiches, they're gonna stop there and, and get some gas, so. I, I think that might add to, and I, and I'd just be curious to see how many vehicles are coming out of, from my standpoint, out of the charter school during that time, to see if we can kinda make sure that we're accommodating for that high-volume traffic during that area, that time. And then you've got, again, residents who are trying to get out of their houses. So that, that's just my concern from, from the traffic study and, and that standpoint of, of things. But in terms of going back to the planning board, the illumination of, the illumination of the, the lights, and I know you're looking for a twenty-four hours, and I, I know there are, there are certain Cumberland Farms that might be, you know, until midnight or ten or eleven, and so, they've approved you to go to the twenty-four hours, is, is that what they agree to, or?
I'd have to look at the, the decision. I don't wanna misstate it. I said Cumberland Farms usually wants twenty-four-seven, but we do have on, on the illumination, there's a very detailed lighting plan that was submitted with planning, and the detail shows that on the illumination of the store, it actually varies depending on the time of the day. So, it starts dimming around the store at, at the evening. If you ever go by the new ones, you'll see what I mean. It's somewhat like landscape lighting, and all of the lighting is, is shielded and designed to keep all of the candle footprint within our site. It doesn't migrate off-site. In this particular case, there wasn't any which migrated off-site, and the lighting is more subdued, as you'll notice. We, we tried to keep it looking as, as attractive as possible, and at the same time, you know, we understand, you know, that there's a need to have visual lighting so people know we're there and open, but it's not, it's not garish and neon signs and things of that nature. There's a real thought behind the lighting here, and, and like I said, it does dim automatically, it's programmed to do so in the evening hours. So, a sort of the opposite's counterintuitive almost, but that's what happens.
So, but those conversations were had at the planning board, right? I, I just haven't had the opportunity to review.
They reviewed all, I'm sure they did, I mean, I think Mr. Roth's here, but I'm sure they reviewed all of the, all of the plans we submitted, and the package submitted included a very detailed lighting plan.
Right, and I, and I don't know what the wattages or the direct terminology on candle illumination or watt, or what, candles, whatever the case may be. But I know that there's always, there's always a concern where, you know, we, we have lighting specs that come in, and they're supposed to be, as you said, with the, the lids that, you know, limiting the light to the site itself and that there's no light pollution that's going on. We tend to get a lot of complaints that there are, continue to be light pollutions, even though those suggest, suggested mechanisms are in place. So I just wanna make sure that those conversations were had at the planning board. I know there were major issues originally when the Sam's Club and the McDonald's, I think in particular the McDonald's that was put in with the, just the light for all the residents over there. So if, if they've had those conversations, then I'd just refer to the, the planning board minutes and move on from that.
Just to address that concern, in the Cumberland Farms that I've been involved with, and this would be, I think, the eighth or ninth in this area, there hasn't been one complaint after, about lighting after the stores have been erected and up and running. But we are mindful of that, so that's why the design is to make sure that the lighting isn't garish and doesn't migrate off of our site. And I think it actually makes it a more attractive.
And then just two more questions, and then I'll yield the floor. In terms, in terms of the delivery, the twenty-four hours, so you, you're, you're saying that it's gonna be off-hours?
There are off-hours. I meant off-hours of, in terms of business and whatnot. Usually you have people inside the store, restocking shelves or cleaning and stuff like that. That's when the deliveries would usually try to be made.
Yeah.
Okay, so that they're not interfering with traffic, number one, they're not interfering with the store personnel trying to do some things like selling product. So it's usually an off-hour that they try to make the deliveries.
So, I'd just say that the community that I currently work for, we, we have a Cumberland Farms, that's a twenty-four-hour operation, and we try to limit the deliveries for the gas, and unfortunately, the number of complaints that are coming in from residents has been enormous, just because it, it truly abuts residential property, and, and we've got deliveries that are coming in at, you know, one, two o'clock, three o'clock in the morning. And when the trucks are coming in to, to drop it, you know, the slamming of the grates and the metal and, and stuff like that, you know, that, that's just another quality of life concern that I personally have, in just getting some type of reassurance that we're gonna have these deliveries. Like, you know, if you wanna have food deliveries, you can minimize the noise associated with that, but when we start talking about the delivery from, from fuel and, and having to pick up the grates and close the grates again, or whatever they're, they're called, you know, that, that's truly a concern, because it, again, it is abutting a development which I think is not fully built out or continues and potentially has more room to be built out, that, you know, will ha, will have more and more residential property that will be truly abutting that, that property. So I, I would just, I would just ask that we try to figure out a, a solution or a timing associated with, you know, the delivery of the gas and the not-peak hours, but also probably coincides with any type of noise ordinance that we may have, you know, within the city. So, with that, my final question was, did you mention that there is a, a car wash associated with this? Did you say that?
There is. There's a car wash.
Okay, where's that located?
It would be on the left side of the, of the building. You can see there's two driveways going into it from the, from the top of the page and coming down.
So it, it would go this way or?
Down.
I'm sorry, it's just.
So cars would enter, there's two wash here?
Okay.
And you have your, there's two entrances. Okay, so cars will come in, come in this way and leave this way.
Now, what's the, what's the car wash? Is, is it just a, is it one of those touchless that just sprays, or is it, I mean, does it have the, the dryers and?
It'd be one touchless and one.
And one actually that you can get out and do, so? So, operations, what's, what's the, is it twenty-four-seven, is that?
Well, they would prefer it to be, but, you know, we've had, we've had it so that it doesn't go twenty-four-seven in other communities, but just so you'll know, the doors are automatic doors as well, so when the car goes in, the doors close, so it's not like it's an open-air wash.
Yeah, again, just concern, you know, quality of life complaints that we're gonna be receiving is that, you know, at night, if you're a twenty-four opera, twenty-four-hour operation, you're allowing the car washes to, to be going on at eleven and twelve o'clock, you've got the, the dryers going, and, I mean, it's, it's pretty loud. It may not seem loud when, I used to live next to a car wash, so I, I know exactly, during the day, it doesn't seem very loud because there's a lot of noise going, taking place with all the traffic, but when you're at eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock at night, it's, it's really loud. So, I would just point out that we should probably put some type of restriction on the, on the car washes, because if not, you know, I, I can already foresee, you know, council meetings where we're talking about the hours and operations of, of fuel delivery and, and car washes, I just wanna try to avoid that. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor in seat four, Council Vice President LaBeau.
Thank you. Could I ask Mr. Roth to come down?
Mr. Roth?
I know that we're only voting on the?
Underground storage tank.
The underground storage, and all of these other questions come up, and, and you and I have had this conversation with the neighbors that were concerned a few months ago about the conservation land, and where in the process neighbors could lodge their concerns, and because it's a commercial area already zoned, there really isn't an area in the process. So then what happens is, is we end up here with all of these other surrounding issues and items that we'd like to have answers for without having to go to all of these various meetings. Is there a way that, or is there citizens' input specifically during any part of this process?
Well, the uses?
Of the entire Cumberland Farms, not just the storage tanks?
Well, as, you know, you and I have discussed this, the use is a special permit or is a site plan review, not a special permit, doesn't require a public hearing in front of the planning board. Therefore, it's an administrative review, that's the way our ordinance is set up. If it was in another zone that required a special permit, that would have then gone to the zoning board of appeals, and you would have had a, a public hearing, and then some of these issues had come up. I do know that during various citizens' input during the site plan review, that citizens did express interest, I've been contacted, we reached out to those citizens. One of the gentlemen was very concerned with the location of the storage tanks and, and underground storage tanks in proximity to Southwood Tupper Pond. We sat down with that gentleman, myself and the city engineer, reviewed the site plan, showed him where the tanks were all up near the intersections of Stevens and Bryant, Brayton Avenue, and not anywhere near the conservation areas. We also printed a large copy, gave it to him and emailed, there was a, another gentleman that contacted a Sunday neighborhood and emailed him if they had any concerns. I think they, a lot of them were the unknown of what the layout was, and once they realized where the tanks were, the, the documentation, that the, the double wall and all of those, and that it meets the requirements, I think they were somewhat satisfied. One of the conditions are identified, and I don't have the file, I didn't even know I was gonna talk on this tonight, was the, we did have a lengthy discussion regarding the traffic report after city council public input, and I informed them, I said, "We need to get a, a traffic study. Please submit the traffic study." They'd actually done one, just hadn't submitted it. We took a review at it and, and looked at it, and looked at the queuing and the timing. The traffic signal division also looked at it, and said that their, their only comment was, is, "Once it's operational, that they would most likely have to go in and tweak the signal regarding the queuing," and I'm not a traffic engineer, "but the queuing back on Stevens Street to minimize that." So we, they fully acknowledged that we were going to have to go back, and, and, and once it's built out, they would look at reviewing it to adjust the signal timing, because you would be adding more traffic, you know, because we're, you know, diverting people to that signal to make a left-hand turn. But then we did require that the right-in, right-out is a wider turn for, and we had a long discussion about truck deliveries and how the truck deliveries would go. The city engineer was adamant about looking at how they were being routed, so they didn't get routed behind the building, and then how they could then go out of a wider entrance on Brighton Avenue.
The issue that I have is that we've been on this for an hour now, and I know we're just supposed to be on storage tanks, but the residents, there's about a half a dozen of them at least here tonight that I know of, and unless they know all the ins and outs to follow the process, which I'm guessing they don't, I'm sure most of the council doesn't know all of the specifics of it, we end up with all the questions, and even just the suggestions given, everyone seems to be very agreeable to making sure everything works out, but we don't have any recourse to make sure everything works out. So when the residents call us again after it's up and operational, how can we give them those, the answers or the reassurance? I know councillor seat one came up with a number of different ideas, and, but we have no way of knowing that that's actually, any of that would be put into effect, or, so where does it go from here?
Well, they've gotten their conservation commissioner approval, and they, you know, as I said, it is a permitted use, it's allowed as of right, and they have, we've gone back and forth, I think the site plan review process took about four and a half months, which is probably about two or three times longer, and they've actually been issued an approval through site plan review because they met the drainage and the traffic requirements, so.
I know you've been great at answering the questions that have come in to different councils, at least that I've handed to you, it's just that, if there's all these, so now we're going to do opponents next, and we have some questions from one, two, three, four, five of the residents, but they're going to come down after these folks have already left the table, so they're going to ask their questions, but they're kind of reversed, they're not going to be here to answer them. So, and I don't think that this is the place, we're just talking about, you know, storing gasoline, that they have all of their questions answered?
So councillor, let me interject for a moment, because I think there is valid concerns on both sides. We have the regulations committee that we can refer this to in full council, which will give the residents the opportunity to come voice their concerns with these individuals who are at the table. I want to remind us, we're during, we are currently at a public hearing right now, I've let the debate continue, but it's appropriate that this gets referred, when it comes up on our agenda tonight, to the committee on regulations, which is chaired by councillor Kilby. He's very quick to call meetings if he needs to, and at that point, they will have their opportunity to go before the regulations committee. At least, I'll tell you right now, when it comes to, as one councillor, when it comes to us, I'm not in favor of voting for this tonight in any way, shape, or form, until all the residents here have the opportunity to come down, which would be during our subcommittee meeting.
Okay, so I would be agreeable to that, and not to hold it up, but we just want the residents, it's a heavy residential area, there was one gentleman said he lives 100 feet from the property line, we talked about trucks coming in and out at night, I know councillor Pelletier and I had an issue over on Peckham Street where there was deliveries coming in the middle of the night, waking everybody up when it's that close, we just want everybody to be happy with, you know, we want you guys to be happy, we want the residents to be happy, and I think if they had some assurances, and we knew that some ideas were going to be put into place, I think that would, that would make for a successful project. With that, I, oh, sorry, go ahead.
You know, I would say that our site plan approval has been done, but obviously, the applicant desperately needs your approval, so if it does get referred to ordinance, if they're amenable to opening the site plan back up after you hold your hearing, and if there are things such as hours of operations, this is obviously, you know, site plan, you know, you know, is not a, doesn't require a public hearing under our ordinance.
Maybe that's something that we need to change for this type of thing?
We would have to, yes.
Otherwise, we end up here.
That's something we could look at, major and minor site plans, the single families don't need public hearing, but commercial maybe needs public notice and that sort of things, that's a thing. But one of my suggestions would be, if you're going to refer it to the committee, and then the residents and the applicant can be there and express the concerns, if they're amenable, because they need your approval, that we could open the site plan up, we could look at conditioning hours of operations, conditioning, we could add those things, but, you know, from a process standpoint, I could look at doing that, but they would have to, you know, want to reopen that up.
I understand, we certainly don't want to hold anything up, but we also want to make sure that the residents are heard, and there isn't, and it's, I mean, I feel like it's the city's process, fault of that process, that until we got here, they've only had bits and pieces of places to go to ask their questions or give their concerns.
I understand your concerns, I don't have authority to, on behalf of my client, agree to waive the four months plus we spent with planning and start all over again.
I don't think that's the intent.
So, just so you know, I can go back and ask, but.
I don't think that's the intent, but if we say, you know, what time is the gas station going to be open to, and we will put some hours around that so that people aren't running vacuums at 2:00 in the morning when the neighbors are right next door, I don't think anyone's talking about, I'm certainly not talking about any, you know, huge changes, but little things that come up at different places in the city that we've been through and will make everyone happy. I yield.
Thank you, councillor in seat seven, councillor Peckham?
Six.
Six, I'm sorry.
Sorry. In relation, it was brought up, the closest house to the property, is that indicated on that map?
It is not, that's kind of just my guess, best.
Would you know, if you were to go over there and show me where the closest residential property would be?
This is the, looking at the, the thing on the roadway here, this spot right here would have the closest house.
All right, and as we stated earlier, it's about 100 feet, the closest residence?
Yeah, that's my best guess, without having to.
Okay. I, the reason I ask that is because I'm going to echo the quality of life that a couple of the other councils have already brought up, and I'll agree with the recommendation of council president. With that, I yield.
Thank you, councillor in seat three, councillor Akili.
As soon as councillor gets back from vacation, which she's a member of the committee, I will be calling a meeting.
Fair enough, thank you. Anything further from the council?
I, um.
Councillor in seat five.
Just want to emphasize, councillor in seat seven, his question about going out to the community, community outreach component, it may eliminate some of these things, because if you look at it from a standpoint of, you know, just from a person who's living in that area, the psychology of it all is that they want to have a voice too, they want to have a chance to say their concerns, and they want it to fall in their ears, that's going to affect, you know, their community. So it's, that's the reason why we're asking the questions that we're asking, because we have people in the community that are concerned about it. And if you have, I mean, you did a lot of work, and I'm not, I don't want to minimize all the work that you've done, obviously you've done hours upon hours of work on this, so I just feel like that out, that last piece, that outreach component is, would encompass, you know, it would bring everybody in, everyone that has concerns, it would bring everybody into, and let them know that they have a voice and a seat at the table as well, so I yield on that.
Thank you, councillor in seat seven, councillor Pelletier.
Did we get a traffic study of you individuals? Could we see that, did we get one?
Well, we had submitted one when we did the planning, we're happy to give another one, normally it doesn't come with.
I think it'd be nice if we had it.
I'm happy to provide it, it's just normally not something with an application for UST, but it's certainly a public record within the city, I'm happy to provide it.
I would recommend, I'd like to have one, and two of my colleagues would like to have one, maybe we can give one to the clerk, or if you want to print them all out, you can give one to the president, and we'll be all set.
And just bring that handy for you, if you've come before the committee on regulations, that'd be appropriate. Thank you very much, folks, I appreciate your help and your time, very good. Any other proponents wishing to speak, proponents? You guys are all set, thank you very much. We're all set with that, you can take that, we can bring it, thank you very much. All right, hearing any other proponents, hearing no other proponents before this council, is any opponents, people opposed to it, please come down, state your name and address for the record, please? One at a time, you can come down first. You can have a seat, just name an address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Daniel Quinn, 40 Winchester Lane, number three. Stevens Street is a pretty thin street, now we've got an additional connection, and there's a couple of traffic issues that I see that you've probably already recognized, but if you have a one-way road on top of this gas station, a percentage of these people are going to want to go the opposite way, and they're going to do that by getting back onto Stevens Street. 20%, 10%, something like that. I think that's a nightmare, because we've already got a single lane that spreads out to something like six other lanes, choices. The new developments in that area have already doubled housings and the families and the cars. You're going to have people trying to go take a left, like someone mentioned, get into the residential areas, and you're going to have people getting onto Stevens Street to take a left back onto the main roads. So it's a complete mess right there. You've got to have some kind of a quick out to the highway, I want to get to the highway without any interruption.
Thank you.
It should be better than this one.
Councillor in seat four, council vice president, LaBeau.
Thank you. Is this the email, this is from you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
He'll be invited to the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other, let's try that again, any other opponents wishing to speak? You just state your name and your address for the record, and have a seat. You can have a seat.
My name is Laura Teves, I live in 40 Winchester Lane.
You can have a seat, yep, feel comfortable.
And we have a lot of concerns. Today I bring the map to show you all the concerns we have, all the people living around have the same concern, and you can see the concerns. Besides these concerns, you're going to have a car wash, car wash is going to be too loud. We need to rest, we need to relax during the night, like everybody, that area is so quiet, Stevens Street is not so quiet like that because a lot of people come from the other areas, goes through Stevens to go to the Walmart, so makes crazy. Plus, all this you have over here, there are some companies, there are big cars, of course they need to go to Stevens Street, when you buy the houses, we know these companies live there. Okay, it's basic, but that's okay, but all this, it's a big mess. I think, please, you have to have consideration for us, to have a car wash, a lot of car wash, plus all this they're going to bring, they're going to bring everything to us, good people, bad people, traffic, it's going to be a big mess, and we need to be a consideration, please, that's all you need to say.
Thank you, councillor in seat four, council vice president, LaBeau.
Because we, we people, we fought for you guys to look for us. We understand the need to do things, but they have Sam's Club, they have place to do things, what are you going to do near the neighborhood? I don't think it's a good idea, I'm sorry.
Councillor in seat four, council vice president, LaBeau.
Thank you. Mrs. Teves is also with residents at 110 Stevens, 96 Stevens, and 120 Stevens Street. So councillor Kilby chairs the regulations committee, as soon as councillor Prer is back, she's a member of that committee, he's going to call a meeting, and madam clerk, if you can make sure all of the residents on the condos and Stevens Street all are invited, not just the director butters, and then we'll have the gentlemen from Cumberland Farms there as well, so you can all get all of your questions answered, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Is there any further opponents wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none, is there a motion to close? A motion to close has been made by councillor Peckham, seconded by councillor Pelletier, are those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Please have it. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, public hearing has been made by councillor Kilby, seconded by councillor Dion, are those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Borough City Council Committee on Finance will now be called to order, madam clerk.
Councillors Kadeen?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Olivia LaBeau?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Here.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Pereira?
President Pfizer?
Here.
Councillor, do we want to do the citations first?
We're going to do those right now, yes, I'm just going to ask the vice president to come up, I have to give one right now. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on our agenda is going to be the citations, just going to ask our vice president to come up so I can give one right now.
Are you going to do citizen input first or no?
No, we're going to do this first. And nobody signed up for citizen's input?
Not that it's working yet, it's because you broke it.
So, the individual who's here to accept the citation today doesn't know that he's here to accept the citation, at least I don't think so. But I'm joined here today by my colleagues, people in city government, also, I know councillor Kilby and I had these discussions prior, and I'd like to invite Coach Bear to come on down for a moment. So many of us in the community have known for many, many years, Coach Bear, I know when I played football at Durfee my freshman year, he was my freshman coach, and it was for all of us that know Coach Bear, you know, he volunteered lots of hours, years and years and years of hours, and his experience and his knowledge and his wisdom has helped so many youth in our community. I know for a fact that when I played for him, there was some lessons that he taught me as an individual, just like many others, that we all live with for the rest of our lives. A very touching story, my class, because I'm still really young, class of 2007 at Durfee, I had the opportunity to play with the likings of B.J. McDonald, Jason Springer, Timmy Powers, a lot of those groups, that was my class, and there's a lot of stories that we could all speak about, Coach Bear, but one story specifically that I'll never forget is the lessons that he taught the entire freshman class that year about responsibility, about growth, and about being humble as individuals. And I think that as I've grown, and I know a lot of the people that you've coached and the youth that you've coached, you've helped tremendously to have valuable lessons so that they can live on for the rest of their lives with as much pride and professionalism that you as an individual were able to instill in them as young adults. So I for one am internally grateful for everything that you've done, not only for the youth, but for the city of Fall River. I know that after you were done at Durfee, I know you went on to continue the Florida Falcons program, which has continued its success. I know the head coach at Durfee, Coach Brown, is here today to also recognize you, because I know it works for his program to be successful as for our Pop Warner program to be successful. Coach Bear is going to go into retirement, but I found it to be appropriate that for all your years of commitment to this community, for your volunteerism to both high school football and the Florida Falcons, I find it to be appropriate here tonight that we recognize you, and let it be resolved that the city council hereby extends its commendation to you in recognition for your years of commitment, volunteerism to both high school football and Florida Falcons football, and be it resolved that the Florida City Council extends its best wishes for continued success. best wishes for continued success, and that this resolution be entered into the records of the Florida City Council. It's signed by myself, the city clerk, and acknowledged by the entire Florida City Council. So, congratulations, thank you for all you've done for the community, and if there's anything you'd like to say, would love to hear from you.
I'd like to thank this council, number one. Over the years with the Falcons, I've come before this council many times, some of you had children that played for me. Every time we came before you, the city stepped up, we needed a new location, you found us a location over Henry Lloyd, the city managed to put lights up, John Perry was very instrumental in that. So, what I've been fortunate enough to be a part of, I've had a lot of help along the way, from the city, from the many volunteers, from a lot of the guys that played for me at Durfee to come back and coach. You know, you hear the slogan, it takes a community, well, I found that here in this city, a community that cared about their young people. So, I want to thank everybody who has ever been involved in helping any of the children in this organization, or any organization in the city. Thank you all.
Thank you, Coach.
Just for the record, Mr. President, when I was talking to Bear, he mentioned that you were only the water boy. Just, I'm just saying.
Take offense for that. Maybe my sophomore year when I didn't play varsity, I think that's what I did, but freshman year I was a right tackle, was going up against Springer most of the time.
I thought you played left bench.
No, no, now I do. Council Peckham's floor is yours now.
I won't take a shot at you, I promise.
Thanks.
Can I call down the family of Patrick Anthony Jordan? Nothing to be nervous about.
This is his first time giving a citation, so he's a little nervous.
Yeah, you're nervous. No, no worries at all. You look fine.
All right, I was made aware in November of a story that I wasn't familiar with, a part of Fall River history that really got my attention. Patrick Jordan here reached out to me, unfortunately his father had passed away in November, and he had relayed a story to me that I wasn't aware of, and it's kind of a, it's an amazing story, it's a story of heroism. Patrick Jordan's father, Patrick Anthony Jordan, back in 1982 during the Notre Dame fire, ran into a building and saved four lives. Because of his heroic actions at the Notre Dame fire, he received a letter from the President of the United States. Son actually followed me copies of all the letters that he had received, and I was blown away, one being by the President of the United States at the time, Reagan, many other state representatives, there had to be, I don't know, 10 or 12 different letters from government officials commending him for his actions. He was also an Eagle Scout and received the Boy Scouts highest award or medal presented to a Boy Scout, which was the Boy Scout Medal of Honor, which I did a little research, they're few and far between. With that being said, in memory of your father, okay? The city of Fall River thanks him for his actions. Official resolution, be it resolved that the City Council hereby extends its commendation to the family of Patrick Anthony Jordan, in recognition of his heroic actions during the Notre Dame de Lourdes fire of 1982. Be it further resolved that the Florida City Council extends best wishes for continued success, and that resolution be entered in the records of the City Council adopted January 28th, 2020.
Congratulations.
Sorry, I'm not here all the time, so, it's my first time saying this. I just want to take a step back, if I knew Coach Bear was here, I would have definitely prepared a nice piece. I just want to elaborate, I played for that guy for three good years, and if it wasn't for you, Coach, I don't know where I'd be today, so I just want to throw an appreciation on that, thank you. Counsel, I'm kind of out of lots of words, I'm getting a little nervous here. Mr. Peckham, it's been fantastic what he's done, and with your guys helping honor my father in his final moments, and I really can't express how great flood is, it's something that I look forward to showing my kids when the time is right. And I think you guys are doing an awesome job, top to bottom, and you guys have my full support, thank you.
Thank you.
Coach Bear, I think you coached half the city over the past years, about half the city.
All right, next item on our agenda is a discussion for the fiscal year 2020 Quarterly Two Budget. Madam City Administrator?
Thank you, Council President. What you have in front of you is the second quarter report. As we have talked about, the second quarter report is right on target to where we should be, we are at about 50% of our revenues collected, and also at about 50% of our expenditures. Giving you a little bit of detail with regard to the expenditures, the first commitment for motor vehicle taxes goes out in February of each year, so when you're looking at the summary page, that is included on page one, you'll note that the collections for motor vehicle excise is only at 14.6%. Again, the first commitment is in February, so we expect that to come in based on the estimated receipts of 8.2 million by June 30 of 2020. The remaining of the revenue line items, as you can see, are primarily at the 50%, there are a few that are below 50%, and a lot of those have to do with timing. I did know, since we had our council briefings, that there are a couple of receivables that are not reflected here, that will be coming in in the month of January, that are for the months of November and December, one of which is the marijuana excise from the state. So, the marijuana excise from the state, if you look at the detail, it's under your quarter two revenue tab, you'll notice that the revenue, the marijuana revenue excise is less than the marijuana 3% impact, and that's what the difference is. The state amount is a little bit delayed in being received, but it is still for this fiscal year. On the expense side, again, we are at about 50%. There are certain departments that are over, the 50% as of December 31, 2019, in particular, the law department is over on the expense side, I believe all of you are aware of that particular reason. There are other expenses that are over because certain expenses are paid early on during the fiscal year, for an example, property tax insurance renews in November of each year, and so that is over, the debt service is over for the same reason, and other than that, if you look down your list, you're pretty much at 50%. One question did arise during the briefing as it related to the MIS department, Ms. Lewis is on vacation this week, so I was not able to confirm all of her expenditures and her encumbrances. I did know after reviewing it, she's had some temporary help, her clerk has been out sick for a number of months, and I did notice there are some mispostings that are posted between accounts, so when she arrives back next week, we will sit down with her and get some of them corrected. So, you are looking at a certain number of expenditures that are over in areas like computer equipment, in the software, and as well as the hardware line, so I'll be reviewing those specifically with her, but her overall budget is on target for the end of the year. The munis software renewal is in July of each year, so again, a $300,000 bill that is paid early on during the year and not allocated over the 12 months. So, if you have any questions with regard to the general fund revenue and expenses, I'd be happy to answer them.
Madam City Administrator, just a couple of quick things on my side while the council gets its reviews, continues to review this update. Question of mine that has been consistent throughout the course of the years have been inactive projects. Currently, we're sitting on over $218,000 in inactive capital projects, and if you don't have the answers, it's okay, but what is the plans of this administration to work out those $218,000 of inactive capital accounts?
Certainly. Actually, I admit that primarily they all relate to facilities, so I met with Mr. Gallagher today. The North End Fire Station, that $49,000 is going to be spent on rooftop units for some of the fire stations, he's waiting for better weather to do that project, and he'll be expending the remaining of that $49,000. He's also looking at utilizing the fund that has, it's Fund 5675, it's the City Park Repairs, it has $43,000 in it, as well as the Thomas Chu Park to finish, and the Thomas Chu Park, I believe is to finish the splash pads, and the $43,000 I believe he's going to utilize for some of the repairs that are necessary within the parks.
Okay, so, I'd just like to urge you perhaps to go back to your, to the mayor and possibly speak, I know we have City Park repairs in excess of over $43,000 there, I know there's going to be additional site work, perhaps that may or may not be needed at the Durfee High School project. If we don't have to go to the reserves, if we don't have to for that, maybe we can be some internal discussions about that with your finance team, because the same useful life would be consistent if we're going to be prettying up outside of Durfee High School, so that's just more of a comment than anything. And my only other, I guess, comment is the school department, are you expecting any additional commitments that the school department's going to be needing, whether it comes to transportation or any additional transfers from the city side in the next couple of months or weeks?
As far as transportation goes, I have not heard from Mr. Pacheco or Mr. Almeida with regard to that account being overspent, so my gut answer right now is no. For the health insurance, we're tracking that, as you know, they don't start school until September, so the healthcare is generally delayed, if you will, we're tracking that closely. There may be a transfer necessary from healthcare to education in February, but I won't know that until we get well into the month of February.
All right, fair enough, thank you. Any questions from the council? Counselor in seat two, Councila Dion.
Good evening. I have a couple of questions on the, let me see, page three, in the purchasing department. It's not a huge item, but you have an appropriation for $100 for conferences, and it's at 595%.
Are you under expenses?
I'm sorry, in munis, on page three, under expenses.
All right, so, page three, under expenses and munis.
Okay. Under the purchasing department expenses, it would be the, one, two, three, fourth line item?
Mm-hmm.
So, the appropriation is $100, and you're at 595%, so $595 was spent.
So, yes, Counselor, so, this particular individual was allowed to go to the annual conference this year, it wasn't budgeted, but the certificates are necessary, or the recertificates are necessary for the licenses in terms of the certifications for procurement offices, and so although it wasn't budgeted, it was approved to keep up the licenses.
Okay, let's see, page four, under the assessors department, travel and mileage after the first quarter was 63.6%, and now it's at 126.7%?
Again, I would have to look into that detail, the budget was $500, and they've spent year-to-date 633, so I can look into what caused that overage. The majority of the assessors that are out on the road do get a stipend of $130, so I'm not 100% sure, I'm assuming that's conference travel as well, but I can't confirm that. But you can see that there's conferences, so I will check.
Okay, and then we had a couple of retirement buyouts that weren't budgeted for, how does that affect things overall in terms of, that it wasn't budgeted for, but we're at 100% now?
Exactly. So, a lot of times what happens with buyouts is that the salary savings will be offset for the buyout, because most often, we're not able to replace the individual immediately, it happens often in the, particularly in the fire and the police departments, so you'll have a savings in the salary line, and you'll have over expenditure, if you will, in the buyout line, but the overall salary account will not be affected. So, when we look at salaries and wages, we always look at it as a total, not as the individual line items.
Okay. On page 20, solid waste disposal, can you explain to me why this is broken up the way it is? We have solid waste collection, solid waste disposal, solid waste disposal other, what would that be?
Well, Mr. Perry's here, so he could probably answer the solid waste other in particular, but it's other than the trash delivery. So, solid waste collection is going to be the easy contract, so that's separated from the disposal cost, so we track the disposal cost both on the solid waste and on the recycling in separate account line items. The disposal other is other than the trash that he needs to remove from the premise, that he collects and removes.
Would that be, like bulk items, or?
Mr. Perry's joining us.
Good evening, Counselors. Yeah, so, as Ms. Hardy said, that's exactly what that would be, so you'd take into account bulk items, waste oil, white goods, which are your appliances, heavy belt plastics, things of that nature, anything that's outside of the regular trash collection.
Okay, now, would that be the same premise for recycling and recycling other? Because I see that recycling other's at 88.9%?
Yes, that is correct.
The one thing too, Counselor, that we'd like to point out, Mr. Perry and I worked on his accounts today, and that $66,324 in the encumbrance under the paint bags, the cost of the bags, will be eliminated, because the bags have come back, and they're in our possession now, and we've made the final payment on the invoices, so that is going to free up $66,000 in that line item, giving it a positive available budget, which we won't be utilizing, of course, of about $22,000.
So, that'll reduce the percentage?
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay. And then I have, that's all I have on the solid waste and recycling, thank you.
Thanks, John.
On page, let's see, where am I? On traffic and parking revenue, what is other? This would be under, this would be under revenue, page seven.
I'm not really sure, the $450, I'm assuming it's some type of reimbursement, it's zero at this particular point, year-to-date, I don't have the historical data that I can compare it to the prior year to tell you what is actually received.
Okay. Now, my last thing is, this would be for Fire Chief Lynch. This has to do with revenue, but in the fiscal year 2020 municipal budget, on page 277, he had set two goals. he had set two goals that I would like to look at, and ask some questions about. And I'm going to read it so that the people know what I'm questioning. So goal number one was increase efficiency of inspections and implementing Chapter 148A. The purpose of MGL Chapter 148A is to enforce violations of the state fire code as an alternative to initiating criminal proceedings and give to the offender a written notice of a code violation. Revenue generated through MGL 148A must be used for enforcement, training, and education of fire prevention officers. Now, number two is implement a fire inspection citation system by training, certifying, and appointing one or more Citation Appeals Officer in partnership with the law department. Chief, would you mind explaining to people exactly what that is?
Sure. They actually go hand in hand. So the first part is actually a state program, and a lot of fire departments use it. So as we go out today, we run into a lot of violations, but my inspectors basically don't have any teeth to do very much about it, except to tell the people, you can't do this any longer. So there's a state program where fire inspectors and firefighters are allowed to carry citation books similar to what the police department does, for minor violations, obviously. So we go to a house in the summertime, we notice that above the fire escape, somebody's put a air conditioner in there. We can cite them for it, and if it continues, the citations will continue also, but there's a monetary fee that goes with it. So obviously, that puts some teeth in what we do, because now, when you hit people in the pocketbook, it makes them wake up a little. Where now, people, it's contingency, a lot of times, we go to the same houses for the same violations. They're burning in the backyard again. They're burning in the backyard again. Their barbecue is too close to the house. They put the air conditioning unit right in the fire escape again. But part of that first part, in order for us to implement these citation books, which we've had for three or four years now, requires that you have an appeals process. So it takes two offices that are trained as hearing officers that people can appeal to. So we sent two people, they were fire inspectors, well, former fire inspectors, to go through the formal training to become hearings officers, and then it was put in the hands of the law department, probably about two and a half years ago. So at the time, it kind of sat there, but he was going to put one of his people in there as the hearings officer also. Right now, that's where it sits. So we have the citation books, we have the inspectors with the knowledge, we basically need the appeals officers, so somebody has a problem, they can appeal, and then we can take it from there.
And you have people trained for that already?
We did at the time, yes.
So would they have to be recertified at this point?
They might have to, because I think we trained them probably about three years ago.
Now, is it correct?
Just a point of information. Sure, Council, and see, one, your point of information?
Just because it's on the topic of conversation, I don't mean to interrupt Council in seat two, but the hearing officers that you're speaking of, Massachusetts General Law dictates that they get a stipend. I believe it's like $1,500 or $2,500 for a hearing officer. So I guess, just as a follow-up through Council in seat two, the two individuals that we sent to training, are they receiving a stipend of $2,500 or $1,500?
They're not receiving anything at this point.
Okay, and would somebody in the law department be receiving that, even though they're the attorney? With that, that's the only clarifying point.
It's okay. It's a point of information and clarity. If anybody at the table has the answer to that question, that'd be great. That'd be great. If you don't, it's okay, you'll get back to us.
No one in the law department is receiving a stipend. I don't believe, in this particular case, the citation hearing officer was ever set up for purposes of these fire citations. I believe the staff attorney that is no longer with us was doing some hearings within the law department, not receiving any stipends, but I believe they were vacant building hearings. But I would have to check specifically with the department.
So would it be correct to say that this would enhance public safety if we implemented this program?
Absolutely.
And would it also be fair to say that it would be a program that would not be a burden to the taxpayer, because only violators would be creating the revenue stream that would come from the citations?
That is true. And just as a point of reference, on that citation book, there's also just a, you can give the person a warning. You know, if it's something minor, instead of finding them right off the bat, you will give them a warning, and that's possible. But if it was something more serious, you know this person was already a repeat offender, the scale keeps going up and up and up, so.
And again, I'd like to mention that due to Massachusetts General Law, the revenues generated must be used for enforcement, training, and education of fire prevention officers, which also would give a little relief in our budget for the taxpayers paying for that type of training, correct?
Yes.
Do we know why we haven't moved forward on this?
I don't, I don't know, Counselor. I can certainly work with the chief and the law department going forward, but as the chief indicated, it was, this program was started two or three years ago. I'm not really sure why the law department, it's probably staffing wasn't able to perform the hearings, and so as a result, if you can't have the hearings, then the citations, as the chief just indicated, is a mute point.
Because it certainly seems like a win-win program, that's only going to benefit the community. And is it also true that we do have hearing officers for other purposes, that even they could receive the training and do the appeals process?
Currently, in the law department, we do not have any hearing officers. So the only individual was a staff attorney that was in the department, who has now left the office, that was doing some of the hearings. So at this particular point, we don't have an individual in the law office that's doing hearings, as far as I know.
So we could look into whether?
We could look into adding that position back into the budget. I believe it's actually in the budget, but look into filling that position and including that as one of the tasks assigned to that individual.
Or, or perhaps in addition to, also see if the people who had the training need recertification, or as opposed to creating another position, utilize the people that have the training.
Yes. And the two people that went for the training are actually pretty well-qualified, because they're retired fire inspectors. So obviously, they could listen to the appeals of the people, and have some pretty good insight on it.
With that, I yield.
If I may, and the Counselor in seat two brings up some really valid points, and my memory is off sometimes, and it probably isn't, but Madam City Administrator, perhaps you can enlighten me. Is it true that, I believe it was last year or the year before, that this city council, through its ordinance committee, adopted a hearings officer through its law department? And at that point, the law department was responsible for listening to hearings. Now, I recognize that there's a new corporation council, I recognize that there's an opening for what the assistant corporation council was doing. Jessica, I believe her name was, was probably tasked with those responsibilities. But just so the council's clear, there was a hearings officer established through the city's law department about a year or two ago, and for some reason, the law department just stopped conducting the hearings. Is that true?
That's, that's, as far as I know, that is true. You are correct, Jessica was tasked with those, and when she joined the service and left our employ, it left a void in that department, and as a result, you are also correct, I do not believe hearings are currently being held.
Well, I think it, you know, to speak to Counsel in seat two's points, I think it might be wise if maybe you and the chief in the law department, along with the mayor, kind of get together, draft something up. It's already established within the law department already, and maybe, you know, the assistant corporation council would be able to work on that. And if corporation council's office is the most appropriate venue to do this, you know, we can go somewhere else to do it, but not necessarily putting anybody else on the spot for that. So I think the Counsel in seat two brings up some good points on this, and I think maybe, we don't necessarily need a resolution, but I think maybe if you can come back to us within the next couple of weeks, within our briefings or to counsel, on what kind of plan the law department has through its outlook to do that, it'd be appropriate.
I'm actually meeting with the state fire marshal tomorrow. He's coming down to Fall River, so I can pose that question to him about, you know, the inactivity of the two inspectors that I had trained for this position, whether they're still valid or whether they have to be retrained, so.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight, Chief Lynch. Without a yield.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor in seat three, Counsel Kilby.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions for Mary. Mary, what's jail services? Is that a fee we pay to the sheriff's department, or?
I'm sorry, where are you reading?
Under the police department, page 11. Just curious. I should know that from the budget, but I know it's a small amount, but just jail services.
I'm assuming that's what it is, but just let me look quickly. Oh, that's school, sorry.
I'm assuming something we pay the sheriff's department, maybe for transportation.
Lunches?
And if you don't have the answer, it's not a big deal, I can get it later.
Could certainly be lunches, Counselor. I don't know if it'd be true, lunches for the inmates, I don't know.
Yeah, I would have to look. I will get that for you, though, Counselor.
Okay, how about, let's see, you know, I realize the, you know, items that are over 100%, their initial expenditures at the beginning of the year, but I am looking at, again, the police department, the gasoline, it's at 100% already.
If you look at that, though, $124,000 is encumbered, so what the chief does is he encumbers his entire line item. So although we have expended $100,000, 195, 124, 804 is encumbered for future, for the next six months.
Thanks for clarifying that. I'm going to go as quick as I can here. Would that would be the same then with travel and mileage, was it at 180?
Yes, that's correct.
How about snow removal? We're into?
Snow removal, my favorite subject. Ask Mr. Perry how it's my favorite subject. So through December, we're at about $331,000. We had a few snowstorms within December that required either snow removal, or at least brimming of the streets. We have been, knock on wood, very lucky in the month of January, so we do monitor it, but it is one line item, as you know, that can be overspent, and we would cover that deficit at year-end, when we're covering other deficits.
What percentage we have now with that?
I don't, I don't know right off the top. I can tell you that I do track it. Last year, we were at 71,000, and we're at 331 through December, but last year, we had, as you know, even closures in City Hall with big storms, the beginning of January. This year, we've had no storms, so I think at the end of the day, we're actually ahead right now.
Again, the police department, the overtime account?
We don't have the chief here with us this evening, so he would have to speak specifically to his overtime account. He does monitor, as you can see, he's got a number of overtime accounts. He also has some grant money that he applies against those overtime accounts. So when we get closer to the fourth quarter, we'll have a better understanding of where he's really at. You'll also notice that right now, he's only at 45% of his salaries, because he's utilizing some overtime, as he's waiting for officers to get into the academy and come out of the academy.
And same thing with the fire department?
Same with the fire department.
That seems like we're down on that one, 35%?
Same with the fire department. The fire department, actually, I don't believe, I believe they, oh, he left us. I believe he has a group that just came out of the academy that will help with, obviously, the overtime, because he'll have the salaried.
But it's where it should be, is what I'm asking, because in the past, that's been, there's been some issues with that.
Yes, that's where it should be. Basically, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counsel Yild. Yes, he does. Counsel in seat five, Counsel Lee.
I just had a few questions as well. Page 24, in the veterans area, I was a little confused by a number that I saw. One of the, one of the good things that I appreciated from the previous administration, and the city council, by the way, when they were able to provide $75,000 to the repairs on the veterans center, right now, it says zero expended?
Yes, so it's expended to date in the facilities department. Mr. Hague reimburses the facilities department when, or closer to the end of the year, so if you look in the facilities department budget, you will see a veterans line item that I believe totals about $22,000.
Okay.
So that will get reimbursed by the $75,000 as the year goes on.
And I know that they had some other funds come in from the state as well, to help with repairs as well.
Correct.
I just wanted to, you know, get a view as to why it was zero, because I didn't expect to see that. Also, if Mr. Perry could come back now, if it's okay, and that's my last question. I don't have many, I just had a couple of them. I had a feeling Ms. Perry knew I was going to ask him. Recycling. So we've heard so many different, I mean, literally, when Ken was here, we heard so many different stories about how much it costs per ton, solid waste per ton, everything. Right now, could you give me the solid waste per ton and the recycling per ton, please?
Solid waste per ton, at this moment, we are paying $97 a ton for our solid waste. That would be your regular household trash and what everybody puts in their green bins.
And that is collected by easy disposal?
Easy disposal, correct.
And they collect our yard waste, too?
They do. They collect it all, recycle yard waste and trash.
They bring it to?
We bring it, goes to Republic Services, and then that gets transferred out of there to a place called Covanta.
Okay. Now, the recycling goes to Connecticut, is that correct?
Goes to Connecticut, correct.
And how much is that?
At this point, we're paying $135 a ton.
All right, so 135 per ton, that's going to, that's eventually going to have to change, right? I mean, we can't sustain that.
I mean, I think we're not alone in this, Counselor. Unfortunately, this isn't just us that is paying this price. It's very difficult to even find an end-user facility at this point that wants to take the recycling.
So it's not, it's not a value. Like, I have people coming to me saying, hey, we can make money off of recycling. That's not the reality.
That's not the reality of the situation at this point, in this market. I'll tell you, we've seen it in a tremendous swing in that market in the last 10 years.
So just as a comparison, we're at 97, and we're at 135.
Correct.
Let's say, three, four years ago, when we were talking about the purple bags and all this and that, the numbers were closer to 65 for solid waste.
Correct.
And so what causes things to go 30 points higher now?
So solid waste, I mean, you're going to see a general increase each year, that are smaller increments. Solid waste is not as difficult to get rid of. There still are places that it can be shipped to, incinerators across the country that still operate, landfills that are still open, and it gets obviously shipped to there. Our landfill's been shuttered for quite a while. With recycling, it's market-based, completely market-based. So when China instituted what they called its national sword policy, they basically shuttered their doors to anybody bringing recycling into China. They required a 1% or less contamination rate of the recycling entering China, which is virtually impossible to do. At that point, there was no market to really get rid of your recycling, so ourselves and every other community across the country, and for the most part, across the world, was having a hard time shipping it anywhere that they could get rid of it.
So we envision that this, these increases are not going anywhere?
There's no end in sight. Even if you look at all of the research and talk to the experts, there's no end in sight. I think it's leveled off to a certain point. They've actually allowed some tonnages in to China at this point. There are other markets that have popped up, in Malaysia, Indonesia, that they've saw, they've seen that there's a need for it, and they've mobilized, and it's taken some time, but they've done that. So the market's kind of leveled off. But what's happened here in the States is these recycling facilities are now stockpiling their recycling. So when you bail cardboard, mixed paper, plastics, they get bailed, and then they get stored in warehouses. So now, there's an overabundance of product. So once the market does call for the need for more recycling to be shipped to these countries, the initial recycling that we're putting out on our curbside as residents isn't what they're going to be getting. They're going to be getting those stockpiles of recycling that have been bailed and stored. So it's going to take a while for the consumer recycling at the curbside to be what's in demand. When that happens, is when your market price starts to turn back.
So, and just, this is the last part, I know we're indulging a little bit on this, but I just wanted to know, is anything, we as a city, I know there was a conversation about a transportation in future, is there anything that we're doing proactively that we can do to decrease the costs on the taxpayer for waste and recycling?
So we're actually really attacking that in many different directions. We're going to start putting on, and you'll all see, a education- We're going to start putting on, and you'll all see, an education push. We're going, we started with the schools last year, trying to get in there, we gave them some demonstrations, getting the kids involved. I think that's a big piece, just real quickly, eventually those children are gonna be the recycling producers, okay? So they're gonna be putting it out at curbside, and if they're recycling responsibly, our contamination rates are gonna be lower. Contamination rates drive your price at the end-user facility.
No matter where you bring it.
Exactly, no matter where you bring it. Historically, our contamination rates have been an issue. We've been anywhere from forty to sometimes fifty, over fifty percent contamination rate. That's a byproduct of the speed at which we instituted the recycling program. When I started twenty years ago, we were probably about eight percent of the city was recycling. Now we offer recycling to a hundred percent of our residents, we try to get everybody to be involved, but I'd say at this point, we're probably about eighty-five percent there. Some people don't recycle at all, they just put out their green cart and call it a day. But we've made tremendous strides.
On the budget, on the actual line item, is there a line item that speaks on how you have that expenditure that ships the recycling to wherever it goes, or is that just sort of generalized expenditure?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
Would we be able to look on the budget to see how much it costs us to send our recycling to...
To the end-user facility?
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be recycling disposal.
So that's where that is, okay.
Yeah, yeah, to Counselor in seat two's point earlier, the recycling disposal other, are those things that we recycle outside of that, so the batteries, the light bulbs, the waste oil and those.
I appreciate that, thank you, and I'll give the floor.
Thanks. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one quick question, in terms of the staying on the solid waste portion of it, the actual disposal, so we have a budget of two million, just over two million dollars, expended nine-hundred-and-seven thousand, we've got encumbrances of about nine-hundred thousand left. Do we anticipate to meet that target for, based on the rates and collection?
At this particular point, with the rates increasing, we will expect to come to the Council in the fourth quarter for a transfer.
Do we know roughly how much?
We do not at this point.
I'd hate to put a number on it, Counselor, and be wrong, I don't want to give misinformation, and I don't want to spark a debate over a particular number that could be inaccurate. It will be over, I can assure you of that, with the rate increase, we did budget for a hundred dollars a ton in this particular budget, we're at ninety-seven, but our tonnages are significantly higher than they were last year.
Well, so, and that was gonna be my other question, is it possible to get an analysis of a pre-post?
We already do.
Pre, yeah.
I can get that to you, yes, sir.
The pay-as-you-throw program, so that we can kind of see exactly what the cost was, because I...
We monitor our tonnage monthly, and we keep track of that.
And I just think, again, it's gonna be a side point, I know nobody wants to really speak about the purple bags, but that was part of the conversations that we were, at least, some of us were trying to have when the prior administration was trying to take a political opportunity to eliminate pay-as-you-throw, that we knew what was exactly what was gonna happen, is that your tonnage is gonna go up, and you're gonna pay a lot more, less recycling, and I know it's one of those things, because the recycling rate is higher than your disposal rate, so, I mean, but at some point, hopefully that evens out, and you wanna have the recycling rates a little bit higher, but I'm just curious to see where we stand in terms of analysis, you know, post the pay-as-you-throw elimination, and, you know, the essential costs to the taxpayers, because I don't think, it was pitched and sold as, you know, a cost savings to the community, and at the end of the day, it's not a cost savings, we're just shifting the cost somewhere else, and we're gonna have to make it up somehow, so I'm just curious to see what that looks like.
And so, not to get too far down that rabbit hole, but that's, in essence, the strong push for the recycling. We are where we are now, how we got here is a whole nother story. So trying to educate the public on the recycling, getting our contamination rates lower than where they are now, which will allow us to go to other vendors and say, you know, we have clean recycling, and we're looking for a better price. And then every ton that goes into the recycling bin comes out of the trash, if we can get a reduced rate for our recycling, and lower our trash tonnage, and try to, as you say, level off those numbers.
So, just in curiosity, just playing this out, has Easy Disposal hasn't come back to the city to ask for additional costs? I mean, because I would think a company submits a proposal based on a simple fact that you're gonna have a pay-as-you-throw program in place, which is gonna minimize the tonnage, so now if you've got tonnage that's increasing, that means more trucks having to come in, or more routes of having to dump the trash somewhere else, which are obviously gonna impact transportation costs and all this else, so I would assume that they have significant incurred costs on their side.
They, to their credit, have not, Counselor. I can assure you, the discussion was had initially, it was a concern of mine, but when speaking to Easy, we decided, let's see how it goes, let's see how many people opt back in, let's see what happens. And they've moved right along with the program as was. It hasn't increased the number of trucks they've needed to use, they've continued to be able to use the same amount of trucks, I think that might be going a long way to them looking at that situation and saying that they can handle it, and also, it doesn't add to their travel because the trash inevitably ends up at the same spot, and that's on Airport Road, at Republic.
So can we also, part of that analysis, are you gonna include the number of people that opted in, so we can see those numbers as well?
I can certainly do that, okay, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Yeah, this time, I think I'm gonna yield my time. I did sit with Mary and the mayor, and I did have one question, but I think I'm gonna wait till a little later for that one, so I yield.
Anything further before the Council on this item? All right, Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deon.
Yeah, I just have one more question on the recycling. Now, we are a single-stream community.
Correct.
What is, do we know what the difference in tonnage is if we weren't single-stream and we were a two-stream system?
Two-stream and single-stream, I think if you have people who recycle, your tonnages are gonna be the same, how it's disposed of and the markets that are available to you are what's different in that sense. Where in this market, again, I wish the answer was something different, Counselor, but in this market, without the avenues to dispose of it, and without the price yield that you're looking for, it really isn't gonna make much of a change. Back in the day, when we were receiving money for recycling, at one point, I think, we were probably up to somewhere around fifty-four dollars a ton that we were receiving for recycling. Back then, it was very important to be able to sort that, because if that job doesn't need to be done at a sorting facility, the product is that much more valuable, it's not contaminated with glass and moisture from cartons that people haven't cleaned out. But with the market where it is now, single-stream, dual-stream, it's all pretty much at a point where it's not yielding much value at all.
Okay, thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, thank you very much, Mr. Perry, Madam City Administrator, we can keep you there for item three on our agenda, it's a resolution to discuss this completed Streetscapes project at Purchase Street and East Main Street, this item's tabled, there are motion to lift on the table.
Motion's made.
Motion to lift on the tables made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Those individuals who are here tonight on these items, I think it'd probably also be appropriate, because we're having to a choice, but to kind of speak to both the resolution and the Streetscape bond authorization, can we take items three and four together? Motion to take items three and four together? Any desire to do that?
Yes.
Motion to take items three and four together have been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Deon, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Just for the community, we have a resolution that was filed by Council Vice President Lebo and Counselor Kadim, that resolves that the city engineer, administrator of community utility, city planner, to review all contracts, change orders, oversight committee recommendations, list of oversight committee members, dates of oversight committee meetings, and be it resolved that these copies of these documents be provided to the City Council as soon as possible. This was tabled early in May, and referred back in early August and September, it's been in the Committee on Finance since. I know some discussions have taken place, which brings us to item four on our Committee on Finance agenda, but I'd allow our Madam City Administrator or somebody at the table to give some brief highlight of where the administration's at right now and where we're going with these items, please.
Certainly, Council President. So as you can see, I have with you, with us today, everyone to speak specifically to the completed projects, those projects on Purchase Street as well as on East Main Street, and certainly, Mr. Perry and Mr. Roth and JR can speak to those projects specifically. Item four is two projects, two Streetscape projects that have not been started, they were authorized by this Council, one being the North Main Street project for one-point-four million dollars, and the second one being the Rock Street program for a project for seven-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. This administration would like to rescind those two Streetscape projects and ask for an authorization for the total, the two million, two, as a supplement for Chapter Ninety for roadway infrastructure improvement.
Thank you, any questions? Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
I wanna take East Main Street and just say my disappointment with Bisco, that done the project there, and the mess that we have up there, and JR knows what's going on up there, and it seems that they wanna do some kind of patches that don't wanna do the whole street. Well, let me tell you, you know, they've been in business for a long time, the city has been good to these people, they've done the Streetscape project, they've done a lot of the water pipes here in the city of Fall River, they've done the water tank up the airport, they do snow plowing, and they've done that city pair, whatever happened there, it didn't work good. And they want to, I guess, they got a hold of you, JR, and where do we stand, but I'm telling you where I stand, and I don't believe that this company should put more patches on that street. Got twenty-seven patches on that street, and they gotta do it right. Nice to be nice, but you know, this guy's gotta be thick-headed. Whatever thing he gets from the city of Fall River, and for them to try to give us the business that we spend good money over there, and he really, really doesn't want to do anything up there, and he's trying to get away with it. It's time that we step on his toes, make sure he does it, we got a new Cooperation Council, let him get a hold of Bisco, and try to get the right story, and try to get the job done right, that's what it should be. But you know, he was talking to me at the beginning, no, you don't wanna deal with me, of course, and he doesn't wanna deal with you, and he doesn't wanna deal with the street as well. It's time, that it's gotta be done, it's time for us to put our foot down and let it know that's what's gonna happen. And if you, JR, feel that if you do, the seven or eight big patches are well and good, I'd say you're wrong, I'd say get the Cooperation Council, bring them into court, and let them fight us to make sure that street is right. And with that, I yield for now.
Thank you very much. Any other further debate on this at this point?
Now, we just, thank you. Now, we just comment, I think this is deliberated, I don't really have any comments, it's been deliberated in the last term at length, so I'll definitely be supporting this measure. I yield.
Thank you, and I wanna just take this quick moment to acknowledge the members of the administration and the finance team, as well as the Council as well for this. I knew this kind of resolution did come up when I was acting mayor, and I thought it was probably in the best interest of this Council at that time to rescind some of these bond projects when it came to this. I know I've had lots of conversations with Mr. Roth and members who are at this table, I think the consensus of the prior Council, and at least, I'm not speaking for everybody here, but this Council, is that we work on some infrastructure repair and some road repair in our downtown. And I'd like Mr. Roth maybe to elaborate a little bit, if you can, because, you know, I know Counselor Kadim and I had lots of conversations prior, prior to this, and I know when he was here as City Administrator, there were some plans in place to work on our downtown revitalization from down on Columbia Square all the way to City Hall. That's something that I've personally advocated for, I'd like to see something like that done, and really, really take full advantage of our downtown. And so I don't know if this administration has had those discussions, but I will say that I'm very pleased to see that we are gonna be leveraging some of our Chapter Ninety money. I'd like to, I'm happy to see that there are ongoing discussions, I know I've had numerous conversations with the mayor about this, about leveraging our Chapter Ninety money, and maybe taking some of this money and have a true downtown revitalization, which is, I think, what we've always talked about politically, but I think it's time to put our money where our mouth is, and if, Mr. Roth, if you wanna elaborate a little bit on that, I think that'd be appropriate.
Okay, I can talk on the South Main Streetscape. We wanna look at doing it what we call a South Main Revitalization Project. It's, you know, it's an enhancement project, but we feel there's a big synergy right now with the Mass Inc. or Development having our TDI fellow, which is our transformative initiative for, and that area is South Main. What we wanna look at doing is taking the time, looking at bringing in the administration, bringing in Council, bringing in the TDI partners, bringing in the property owners, and going through a well-vetted public process to come up with how we can use infrastructure money to revitalize, whether, you know, I know there's been talk about one-ways, added parking, wider sidewalks, adding areas for outdoor restaurants, all of those things need to be vetted and seeing if we can do that. And those are, you know, an enhancement project, a revitalization project, is a long-term investment for economic development. And so that's where we're looking at shifting, you know, not really, it's not gonna be a South Main Streetscape, we really wanna look at it as a South Main Revitalization Project, but put a public component in. As you know, when I started, I was handed two projects that were, you know, helped with the, they were already designed and bid, and if you kind of look back at them, they were, the design time was compressed quite a lot to about a four- or five-month process, and it really didn't have a process to build, you know, what a proper Streetscape or revitalization should do. And that's bringing in the citizens, bringing in, and especially with South Main, we have the TDI, Council, the administration, and the property owners, and let's take a look at the one-way option, adding parking, what are the impacts, because, you know, and all of these things, and what can we do? So that's where we're looking, and when Council President Pont was acting mayor, that's a direction that we sat down and talked with, and that's how we wanna move forward with utilizing those bond funds. And it doesn't have to be reauthorized, because revitalization Street, it's the same process, it's the same thing, it's just, you know, taking a different direction with it.
Thank you very much. Counselor in seat four, Counselor Vice President Lebo.
Thank you. When I was at the briefing last week, I had asked that this not go on the agenda, because when I had originally put this in with Counselor in seat one, the intent was to take all of the Streetscape money back and use it towards road repair, and at that meeting, some gentlemen from local businesses came and spoke about TDI and what was happening, none of which the Council had been made aware of, that was the first time that we had been made aware of that. Since then, I've had conversations with the fellow, Jim, that's here, with Mike Deon, with President Ponti, with Mayor Coogan, and I had said to them, don't put this on there, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna do this anymore. So I'm very glad to hear that that is the direction that this conversation is going, that it would just be the two projects, Mary?
Yes, yes, Counselor, so we're just rescinding North Main Street, which is, I believe, one-point-four million, and Rock Street for seven-seventy-five, and including them as a supplement to Chapter Ninety. What you'll be remaining is the South Main Street project at a million oh sixty. Now, based on what Mr. Roth just said, and what the future may hold for revitalization of South Main Street, we may be back to this Council in some time to supplement that particular bond authorization if a million oh sixty is not sufficient, but right now, it's way too early in the process to be able to estimate what a project, because we don't even technically know what the scope of the project would be for South Main Street.
Agreed.
So the million dollars may not be enough ultimately, but we're aware of that, and we'll be looking to do the proper design, and then look for the additional funding, which could potentially come from the state as well.
Perfect, because we had gone to a lengthy meeting, Counselor, and seat one and I had gone to a lengthy meeting that was hosted upstairs at... a lengthy meeting that was hosted upstairs at Alexander's and it was a full room of all South Main businesses that were interested in the revitalization of South Main Street, as they should be. They've made investments and they want the city to make investments as well.
Exactly. And not to interrupt you, but that is the other concern, right, is we may want to go much past Columbia Square where the current design was from Columbia Square to Sullivan Drive.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm glad to hear that that is the direction that the new administration is looking to go in. I yield.
Thank you very much. Anything further? Councilor in seat five, Councilor Lee?
I had a question.
Go ahead, Councilor in seat five, you have the floor. I recognize you first.
So one of the things that you and I have talked about, Ms. Hadi, is that whenever you have these projects, whenever you have these plans, whenever you're talking about all these different things you want to do, do you ever, or does anyone ever really put funding to the side or anything like that for repairs? Does anyone look forward on that? Because every time we go through these processes, every time we go through these streetscapes or anything like that, once the potholes come, they seem to keep coming and we don't have enough to take care of them all. So I just, when you, when you do all these, you know, when you do all this planning, do you have money set aside for the repair piece? Is that something that's part of the thought process?
So certainly, we're always thinking about potholes. I think Mr. Perry will tell you the number of potholes within the city have decreased significantly over the last number of years, although, you know, some of us drive down certain streets and say that can't possibly be true. However, in the bond authorization, it is only for the capital expenditure. So what we have been doing over the last couple of years is adding resources to Mr. Perry's street and highway department budget in order to provide asphalt and concrete repairs.
I can confirm that as well, Councilor. If you look back in the last three years, there's been significant increases in asphalt, funds to purchase asphalt, equipment, and we've formed, obviously, the concrete and asphalt crew. So with a project like this, with all of the planning and care that's going to go into deciding what we do, it would definitely be a high priority spot that we would always pay attention to and could bring a lot of that work in-house now with the improvements we've made.
How are you? Thank you. Councilor in seat seven, Councilor Pelletier.
Yeah, of all the speeches that I just gave, and I forgot to ask the question. Where do we stand on East Main Street and what are you doing about it?
Counselor, I spoke to the contractor today and we've had internal discussions. I'm coming into this, as you know, after the fact, but I've been brought up to speed on what's taking place and how we got what we got. The core samples that were taken by both our group and a group by the contract from the contractor show the same thing, that there was some deficiencies in the asphalt in certain areas on East Main, which you're well aware of. Full grinding and repaving, so mill and overlay in essence of the entire street would be, in my opinion, a difficult argument. So in working with them and going back and forth myself with the contractor, we've come to a decision where we will get all five of the major intersections along East Main Street milled and overlaid, not infrared it. They will be milled and overlaid. The center line crack repair will be done as well and we will be able to make sure that there's also the 150 feet of the roadway where we found deficiencies in the depth of the asphalt, where you'll see it start to come apart a little sooner than others between Globe and Palmer. Those areas will also be repaved, milled and overlaid. So I think that is a significant increase from where we were not long ago and we're looking at the project repairs beginning mid-May. As you said, I mean, we could take this, you know, as far as we could, and I think we'd still be talking about this next year, possibly, if we went to litigation and having, you know, possibly even expended funds out of our own pocket to get to a point where we were satisfied with the repairs and then have to go after the contractor for that, to recoup that, which we're not sure we would even be able to do. I'm cautious. I'd prefer to lean on the sign of caution, get some quality repairs that we weren't at before, where they weren't willing to get us to before, and get this project closed out until hopefully the best satisfaction as we can with yourself. I know how personal this is to you, specifically due to the area and the constituents that you represent. And then, you know, we go forward with this, knowing that hindsight is 20/20 and not allowing the mistakes of the past to happen again. I know that's, it's been said before, but obviously with all of the attention that these two projects have brought, it's something that's not lost on myself, Mr. Roth, JR, or this administration for sure. I know that.
JR, you agree with that?
Yes.
You're the engineer, but he's the boss.
I am the engineer and I agree with what he said.
I agree.
I don't.
I understand.
No, I just don't. I just think he's taking advantage of a situation and all the work that he's done at Fall River, all of a sudden somebody picks up on him. Well, maybe there's something wrong in the past, I don't know. It's his chance to do the right thing with all the work that he does for Fall River. And does he saying, "I do perfect work, everything that I do"? I guess he's saying that. And to say everything that we've given, all the jobs, he can't repurpose, yeah, that's a big word, give us, that street done the right way. I think he owes it to the city and, you know, in the future, geez, if he's taking contracts and taking contracts and he doesn't show us that he's going to correct what's wrong, why shouldn't he even deal with him? You know? But you say it's all right? He says it's all right? Where am I going? I'm on a sideline in the field.
Well, Counsel, to just speak on that point a bit, in my conversation with Mr. Bisco, obviously, I can tell you that he did identify there were some deficiencies. He didn't try to skirt complete responsibility, did not say the statement that, you know, he did perfect work on the entire job. I can tell you that for certain. But to his point, he doesn't feel as though the entire length of the street is deficient. And I understand your frustration, certainly, but I don't think we can look necessarily back on the history of a particular contractor and the work that they've gotten or not gotten from the city. I would imagine most of the work that he does is bid out, it's competitive bids. So you have all of the companies in the city, the LALs, the Centuries, the Biscos, they all get a chance and an opportunity, correct? So I would say that they all have gotten significant business from the city over the years. I'm not defending him. My job is to sit here and try to figure out a solution that is going to best suit the project completion and to put these issues to bed and to try to move forward going, knowing that the problems that we've encountered on this project are not going to be repeated. And that's what I'm here to do. I can tell you, our conversations have been inclusive. This is not me saying that this is what JR's opinion needs to be. This is a group effort as far as kind of come to a solution that works for everybody that's realistic in the outcome. And I think, you know, like I said, when I started, a lot further along than we were before as far as a corrective action from the contractor to the city.
So what kind of money you think you're saving by cutting the corner again?
I think the original infrared was cutting corner. I think, you know, trying to infrared the intersections was probably a cost cutter. Mill and overlay and infrareding the seams is much different. Mill and overlay is you're going to get brand-new asphalt and we're going to be using 9.5-millimeter asphalt, which is a much tighter asphalt. So those intersections will be top-notch. That's what you want to see in those intersections. Some of the core borings we found were 12.5-millimeter asphalt gauge. The 9.5-millimeter is going to give you a much tighter patch, so I don't think that this is necessarily something where we're getting a subpar product. I think the mill and overlay in these intersections and the crack repair along the roadway and the 150 feet between Globe and Palmer that's going to be repaired are identified areas of deficiencies within the contract. And I think if you took, you know, our engineering report, their engineering report, and you compare them, they're similar. Deficiency were found in specific areas. This corrective action addresses those areas.
Who's paying for this?
They are completely and solely. We will not be spending a dime of city money to make these reparations.
Now, they're going to go corner to curb to curb?
In the intersections, correct. Correct.
How long are the new patches?
I'm sorry?
How long are the new patches?
The patches, the 150 feet?
They're going to put how many new patches?
They're going to, it's five intersections. So you'll have seams, but infrareded seams, so they'll be almost imperceivable. Over time, you may have that slight bump when you get there, but I mean, we're talking years down the road. But there'll be infrared seam, so you obviously have, if it's a four-way intersection, you have four seams at where it meets the oncoming roadway into the intersection. Five intersections from Hamlet to Slade, the 150 feet between Globe and Palmer that will be repaired due to the depth of the asphalt that was put down, and then the center line crack repair as well, to no cost to the city.
So if I can't get what I want, how soon they're going to start what I don't want?
Mid-May is what they're going to, what they're proposing. I'm sorry, Counsel?
I says, for what I want, they ain't going to do it, but when they're going to start it for what I don't want?
Mid-May. Mid-May, mid-May is the project.
And you think that's the way to go?
I do, Counsel, I do. I think we're going to, I mean, I'm not an attorney, obviously, Counsel, but...
Well, the guy got bonded, I mean, then pull a bond, do the whole thing.
You'd have to be justified in pulling that bond as well, so that, you know, again, it becomes litigation.
He admitted he's done some lousy work.
In certain areas, correct. Not complete, not the complete street, though. You know what I mean? And that's where you'd have to really start to look at pulling that complete bond, is if the entire street had deficiencies of this nature. And then that would be fought by the contractor, any contractor, which becomes litigation, which leads you in down that road of how much are we going to spend on litigation to get a repair and possibly end right back where we are today with this action plan to be the fix. We don't know. It's a toss-up. So are we willing to take that chance or are we willing to take a corrective action that I feel and other people involved feel is going to get us to a point where the job is done right at the intersections, the center crack is filled and those deficient areas are addressed and move forward, knowing that those are done? And obviously, Counsel, if you'd like to sit down, you and I can have a much longer conversation about this.
No, it isn't no good.
No, it, you know, it would offer, well, but it would offer you the opportunity to sit down and see where, exactly where we're coming from without thinking that this is just a pass being given to a specific contract.
I think it is.
I understand and I respect your opinion, Counsel, but I can tell you, you've known me a long time. I'm telling you, this is not a pass, in my opinion. I would be straight with you and I always have been. I think this is, this is the most amicable solution and best solution for us to be able to put this project to bed and get the repairs that need to be done, done, and make sure we can move forward.
And who's going to lay the tide down? The same guy who messed it up?
Same, same company will lay it down, but with extreme oversight on our part to make sure, that's right, we will be on top of it. We'll be on top of it.
That's me.
You'll be watching?
Yes.
Where were you last time?
Looking at the person bank.
I can assure you, I will make sure he's watching, Counsel.
Anything further? Very good. Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn finance? Motion to adjourn finances was made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Kadim. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. We're going to full counsel right now. Former city council meeting will now be called to order. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Kadim.
Here.
Dion.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Lebo.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Peckham.
Here.
Pelletier.
Here.
President Ponty.
Here. If everybody at the chamber could please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you and a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk.
The first item before you is a communication from the mayor and a loan order in the amount of $2.1 million for the purchase of stove and roof equipment.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to authorize, motions are authorized to be published and referred to finance would be appropriate, has been made by Councilor Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Kadim. Discussion. Hearing none, Councilor in seat seven, Councilor Pelletier.
I thought we ought to vote for this.
We did, Counsel. There was a error. Madam Clerk, can you elaborate?
Yes. The item as presented, it came to the council after the agenda had been prepared.
Hang on, Perry.
It's procedural, Counsel.
It was procedural, I believe.
And it came before you before. It did not include an emergency preamble, so the bond council is requesting that, it's requesting that the proceeding get over yet.
He was saying that the equipment's coming in in December. Has the equipment coming in December? And then he said the rest is going to come in in January, so I guess there's nothing going on.
I can tell you, I can tell you, it's been, the equipment has been ordered. If we make, motion to waive the rules has been made by Councilor Pelletier, seconded by Councilor Kadim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
What was your name, Counsel?
How you doing?
How you doing? Yes, sir. Can I do?
Well, you know, I thought we voted for this already. You said to us, "The equipment's coming in December, don't worry about it. There'd be no storms."
I think it...
And then the rest is going to come in in January. Where's the equipment?
Equipment is anxiously anticipated by myself. You're right. We anticipated that actually the second week of January was supposed to win, the first order was supposed to be in. And then the rest was supposed to follow some point in February, closer, maybe to the end of the month. There were some delays in the manufacturer getting the cabs and chassis. There were a lot of orders at that point. I stayed on them. We've called them daily and I can put you in touch with them and they'll tell you that. As a city, we've called them daily. So the first truck, I'm hoping, first seven of the trucks, I'm hoping to start seeing coming in, I was hoping by the end of this week, but if not, definitely next week, we should start seeing new city trucks.
Suppose I don't have the money yet?
Sorry?
Suppose I don't have the money yet?
Oh, that's why I have faith in you that this good counsel...
It ain't coming out of my wallet.
...will make sure that this procedural error is corrected and handled in an efficient, quick manner, Counsel.
So we take care of this, you're going to get the trucks?
I promise you that.
Next week.
I'll bring it by your house and show you.
I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Mr. Perry. I will say that our city administrator did indicate to me on the phone earlier in the week that, again, as Mr. Perry indicated, is on order. Bond council took exception of the way we did it procedurally, so we're going to get rolling. We hopefully don't have to touch free cash on that. Motion to authorize to be published and referred to finance has been made and seconded, hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor and two orders. The first, rescinding the loan orders for the North Main and Rock Street streetscape projects.
Motion to adopt or?
Second. Motion to adopt the order and accept the mayor's communication for both items A and B has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number three is a communication from the mayor requesting the confirmation of Louis Gonzo as a member of the redevelopment authority.
Motion to adopt confirmation?
Motion to doubt the confirmation of appointment has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of John Erickson to the redevelopment authority.
Motion to adopt confirmation?
Second. Motion to adopt the confirmation of appointment has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is Erickson here?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Yeah, item number five is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of Joan Madeiras as a member of the redevelopment.
Motion to adopt.
Very happy to make that motion.
Very happy to make that motion. Congratulations.
Wow. Motion to adopt has been made by everyone, seconded by everyone. Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing, Counselor on seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Well, I'd like to tell my neighbor of four doors down that you couldn't get a better person. She got a resume so long. Mine's just little, very smart, smart banker. I know where to get the money now, go see her. But congratulations and good luck, neighbor.
Thank you.
I yield.
Thank you. Motion has been made, hearing no further discussion. Motion has been made and seconded, hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations, Mr. Medeas. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Item number six is the traffic commission making recommendations to the ordinances.
Motion to...
Motion for... Order made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas there is overwhelming traffic congestion and concerns in the area near Northeast Alternatives that has created a public safety concern, whereas police details have been required on weekends and holidays, and whereas the host community agreement between the City of Paul River and Norfolk Altardis does not state that the City of Paul River would incur the cost for these police details, rather it states the city is under no obligation to use the payment in any particular manner. Now therefore be resolved that the Committee on Finance convene to discuss this matter and determine who would be the responsible party for paying the police details at Northeast Alternatives.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion, this counselor who sponsored the resolution, Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
Reason I brought this up was after the last meeting, we had discussed the city flipping the bill for the police details there. I've spent quite a bit of time over at that intersection, and horrific is an understatement for the traffic. Doing the math and doing a little bit of research this week, and along with the year-to-date budget report, we're spending, if we supply a detail, two-man detail there every weekend, we're not even including holidays, at $55 an hour, times two offices is $13.20 a week, okay? Fifty-two weeks is $68,640 if we continue to pay that detail for the year. After looking at the budget, overtime special civic events, which I'm assuming would be in relation to something similar, we're at 127.2% already. I don't think we should bear the burden any longer on those details, and I believe that the establishment should start to cover their end of the bargain. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat four, Counsel Vice President LaBeau.
Thank you. I just want to commend Counselor in seat six?
Seven.
Seven?
Six.
Six. For putting this resolution in, we, I know we talked about it when the folks were in front of us. I've had a conversation with our city administrator about it, along with Counselor in seat one, Counselor in seat two, and the mayor. I agree, I don't think that it's meant for a permanent detail, and I think it's gonna set a precedent. We've got another one opening within the next two weeks, from what I've heard, and I understand that they are giving money and it's for impact for the community, but I don't think using this to address the problem is the right way to go.
I would agree.
That I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seats six, Counselor Pelletier.
One other thing, and it was a discussion that I had, with the other facility opening in the north end, we've received quite a few complaints about North Main and Weaver. I went by there last week to check it out after a woman had been hit by a motor vehicle. Now, I would like us not to set past practice to where we're supplying detail for one company, and then this new company opens up recreationally, and then they ask us to do the same. Where does it end? It has to end somewhere. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
I can't believe we're paying for detail up there. Anybody else has a detail they're gonna pay for? And are they actually paying, the city's paying these guys for two officers there?
Yeah.
That's wrong. That's wrong. All the money they're making, they should give us all the money back. That's not right. But you got the right idea, let's stop them. If they need a cop there, let them get two cops, let them get three cops. The city's should pay for it. Nice job. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, Counselor...
I only raised my hand because I want to have Mary Sahai come to the table, because she's nodding her head, and I just want to make sure that we're clear as to how this expenditure is actually going.
Well, Counselor, I appreciate that, but I think it's appropriate to allow the administration some time to get their act together.
Okay.
In the resolution, it states that it's going to be referred to the Committee on Finance, so we'll allow them to get their financial questions together, prepare themselves, and then we'll get them down maybe to the next meeting.
I yield.
I just don't, we just don't want her to come down, waive the rules, and hurry not to have all the answers to the questions for you.
I yield. No problem.
Thank you. Anything further from the counsel on this? Hearing none, motion has been made and seconded to adopt the resolution. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas the City of Paul River Fire Department recently battled a fire on County Street on January 13th, 2020, and whereas the Paul River Fire Department worked alongside responders from surrounding communities of Dartmouth, Freetown, New Bedford, Seco, Somerset, Swansea, Westport, and Turbine, Rhode Island, in helping to keep our citizens safe from the aforementioned fire. Now therefore be it resolved that the Paul River City Council extends its sincere gratitude to the surrounding fire departments for their efforts in helping the City of Paul River with mutual aid.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Lee, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion, entertain it from one of the sponsors of the resolution, Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
Just real quick, I have no problem making this into a form of a letter, but however we can show, however the counsel or the rest of the counsel feels about it, I just felt, the conversation really started when one of the gentlemen from, one of the firefighters from Seco actually broke their ankle or injured their ankle, and I first wanted to talk, to send something out to him specifically, but then as, you know, I had more thought and more conversation about it, I felt like it was right to send a thank you to all the surrounding communities, because I actually was able to witness this firefighting, you know, situation. I was driving, I was driving home, it was right next to my house, and I got a chance to see it, and I know, you know, Counselor in seat six also expressed it on social media that he saw it as well and gave his gratitude, so I just felt like it was the right thing to do, just based on the situation, so I yield.
Well said, Counselor. Counselor in seat seven, six, who also sponsored the...
I'm gonna put a number in front of it.
Counselor in seat six, who also co-sponsored the resolution, Counselor Peckham.
I would publicly like to thank the surrounding towns for coming in and helping us. Having worked for the police department in the past and dispatch, I know how important mutual aid is, and I know what goes into it. They abandoned some of their fire facilities to come and help us and aid us, and with that, I'm very, very grateful for all the work that they did and the assistance that they gave us, with that I yield.
Thank you. I think it'd probably be appropriate to fulfill the obligations of this resolution. Madam Clerk, if it's voted unanimately, if you could send a letter on behalf of the counsel, maybe at the next meeting, we can all sign it, or you can just get it out, however you want to do it. I think that would fulfill the obligations of the resolution, right?
Yes.
All right, hearing...
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order. Can we, through the two chiefs, get an update on where mutual aid agreements are with the various communities? If we can get copies of that.
Sure. Madam Clerk, can you make sure you get that to Counselor Kadim? Motion has been made to adopt and seconded.
Second.
Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. By the way, congratulations to the first two resolutions from two of our new counselors, so congratulations. And I know Counselor in seat two is working on a few resolutions as well, so we'll be seeing some from you as well, I'm sure. Just wanted to congratulate them on their first resolution, that's all. And I know you're working on some, too. And you co-sponsored them last time, so... Madam Clerk.
Items nine and 10 are citations, Counselor.
Motion to, motion to take items nine and 10 together has been made by Counsel Vice President LaBeau, seconded by Counselor Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion to adopt the resolutions would be appropriate?
Motion.
Motion to adopt the resolutions has been made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counsel Vice President LaBeau. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the order granting permission to Paul Cantelmo for the removal of curving at 140 Ash Street.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor...
Mayden.
Pelletier.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kadim. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 12 is the order, excuse me, the order granting permission to Kathleen Hurley for the removal of curving at 144 Ash Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by...
Second.
Counselor Deion. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And item 13 is an order granting permission to Stanley Webb for removal of curving at 334 Newton Street.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry?
Me.
You want to speak on it?
Yeah.
Counselor on seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Originally, he asked for so many feet, and then he come back and asked for seven more feet, because what? He wanted to take it out, he needed a plybar?
Madam Clerk.
The curving was, has already been removed.
What, extra seven?
It was constructed with 12 feet, and then he increased the opening to 19 feet for off-street parking.
Without permission?
Without permission.
That's nice. Another one.
Counselor...
Do they tell him, they tell him, "You taking 12, is that enough? Why don't you go to... Seven is 18, 19? I mean, it's crazy. All right, I just get my point out there, that's all. Thank you.
Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
So what's the repercussion for just taking out? Like, if I wanted to go to my house and just start chiseling out a curb without any permission?
I don't know that...
Besides the fact that my neighbors would complain, because I'm doing it, but I mean...
Well, I can tell you that the property did change hands back in August of 2019, so perhaps that's when this game's over.
So can we, can we just work with, who manages that engineering? Can we just work with engineering and see if there's anything, and I'm not familiar if there's anything in ordinance, or if we have to get something in ordinance with, if it's a fine associated with it, or, you know, the cost associated with trying to, the application for a curb cut gets doubled or triples, some of like what building permits are? I just, I agree with Counselor in seat seven, that, you know, we have a lot of these that just come before us after the fact. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Approved.
And item 14 is the order granting permission to 64 Stevens Street LLC for permission to store gasoline at 64 Stevens Street.
There were a number of objections.
Motion to refer to regulations.
Motion to refer to regulations.
Second.
Has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the application for renewal of auto repair shop on behalf of Nicholas Paglioli.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Deion. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And item 16 is the application for renewal of auto body shop also for Nicholas Paglioli on Long Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Deion. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
A number of things.
Motion to refer to corporation counsel would be appropriate?
So moved.
Has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Vice President LaBeau. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
My application for the placement of a permanent sign for the Rotary Club?
This is on the corner of Robeson and Highland Avenue? For an event or something?
No, it's permanent.